Thank you. I think we had a couple of additions, yes?
Actually, yes, Mayor. Trustee Rhodes has requested that we remove number five from the consent agenda, since everyone was notified of that. Everyone received a copy of the cornerstone contract that we're hoping to, that the board may or may not approve. Trustee Rocco has requested that the board review the gas conversion. There's a budget modification from the treasurer. There's discussion on the moratorium extension. And there's a letter from Mark Lauer asking the village to consider committing to funds. It's the same we went through last year with OCA, OC, OCR.
OCR.
If the, if the project extends past the amount that they promised to us, the state just wants a confirmation letter from us that we will commit to the additional funds.
And that requires board approval?
Yeah.
Anything else?
I do.
Anything else on the board, yeah?
Can we, I mean, I don't know about the rest of the board, but budget modifications in cornerstone could go on the consent agenda.
Any additions? So moved?
And...
Is there, let's just do that as a motion. Someone want to second that?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, and what was your addition?
I have three additions. I'd like for the board to agree to set up a meeting with Mr. Sideman from Woodland Pond, because we promised when all the water bills were paid, we would sit and talk with him about potential resolutions. And I think we ought to do that, because the bills have all been paid. I'd like a 105 update.
A what?
A 105 Huguenot Street update.
Joe can provide that.
Yep.
Yeah. And I would like to propose that we think about a no parking resolution from Broadhead Avenue all the way to Main Street on Huguenot Street. And I have a question. Are we doing the moratorium?
That's on, that's on the list, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the table.
And I'd just like to review, I know everybody saw it, Mr. Lavalas recommendation for quality of life issues resolution.
What would you call it?
Volunteer code enforcement.
That form, well, the form is already in use.
No, we're just, it's brand new.
Yeah.
And trustee Vasco's request, with mayor's consent, it's already on the webpage and has a new calling.
But Kurt asked for board consent to pursue this with a volunteer approach. That's it for me. Up in the executive session, I have some issues.
We have, we have an executive decision anyway, we just touched on it.
Yeah, just, okay.
Anything else from anyone else? No, alright, just to keep things, to be clear, moving the cornerstone contract and budget modification to consent agenda pass, which brings us to twenty-two items on today's agenda. Let's see if we can get it done. Hour and a half, two hours, maybe?
Uh, this is here.
Yeah, so...
How many items?
Twenty-two.
On the consent...
No, ask, look, ask Michael Ziller, he's going to chair the town ENCC. We got forty-seven agenda items, I wouldn't let anything leave the agenda until we had resolved it. So all of our back projects were discussed at every single meeting with approval. Alright, so we've got a couple things for, 105 Huguenot, I see some folks here for that. We've got Lisa Borges who's interested, did I say that right, Lisa? Borges? Okay, I'm thinking of the writer, yeah, yeah. So to be interviewed for the housing board, is there anything else that folks are here for specifically? No? Okay. You know, Kurt, obviously the planning stuff will try to get you home soon, but actually all of these really are planning. Never mind. Alright, so with that, I'd like the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And public comment, who would like to go first?
I just wanted to ask what the latest update is on 105...
We're gonna get that from the village attorney in just a few minutes. And then, we'll, don't worry, you'll have time to respond at that time, so we're not gonna close you out. Anything, anyone else for public comment, anything? Alright. Any additions on the board?
Yes, one. I would just like to bring to the community's attention as well as the board that the fiftieth birthday anniversary celebration of Manny's is coming up in August, and they are oldest retail business in the village of New Paltz. So happy birthday, Manny's.
Hi, Jane.
Yeah, please.
The Ulster County Firefighters Parade is this Saturday, hosted by the Wallkill Book and Ladder Company. It's, the kickoff is at 1:00 PM. Lineup is by the Wallkill High School, and the main route is through, through the village of Wallkill along Railroad Avenue and Wallkill Avenue. So if anyone is interested in going and cheering our award-winning firefighters on, it will be great.
Great. Any other nonsense? No question?
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, what do we want to do, let's get the 105 Huguenots, at least two people here. So Joe, why don't you take the helm here?
The, the building department and I met, we conferenced a review of the existing code provisions as well as the best options for going forward if it was the board's desire to, for lack of a better word, improve those code provisions. There are two separate issues, as you know, in the first instance, we want to do what we can right now to make sure that we're enforcing the code as it exists appropriately. It was our determination that the use is unlawful under our current code in that district. So, an order to remedy has been issued requiring them to cease and desist the operation of the place as a short-term rental. I forget the exact date that we gave them, but I will say this, we gave them the typical amount of time that an order to remedy would give. I've also been in contact with the owner, who obviously has made the case, A, that it may not be unlawful, and B, that it shouldn't be unlawful. And I know that there is at least some sentiment out there, and I discussed this the last time I was at the board, that even if we go forward with the adoption of provisions that make it unlawful, you do want to take into consideration what districts you want it to be unlawful in, because, and, and what the regulations may be where it is unlawful. In other words, is it completely prohibited in certain places and allowed in others? And if it is allowed, what would the rules and regulations be by which you would police that practice? And the reason for that is that there are actually some planning and community development reasons that you do want people to have the flexibility in general to rent out portions of their property. For one thing, there are constitutional issues, it's their personal, you know, their real property, they own it. But for another, it is considered one of the ways that communities can preserve affordable housing, frankly, for young people, for older people, so that they're not priced out of the marketplace. And of course, it's also a way for people who are struggling to make ends meet, to make ends meet by renting out portions of their homes. So, going forward, I'll be working with, I mean, first of all, I'll be looking for direction from the board on exactly what it is they want to do. Once we've got a general sense of how we want to proceed, I'll be working with the building department to develop new code provisions that address it. Because I think it is safe to say, we want to address it very clearly in the code. It's one of those things where about every twenty years, there are just new developments in the way communities look and the kinds of ways that, you know, thirty years ago, there was no such thing as an extended stay hotel. Nobody knew what was. You know, so things develop, things change. We should have code provisions that address this VRBO concept. What exactly they look like, we'll be discussing. But you should know that we have issued an order to remedy, that would be followed if they don't comply, which in this case really would just, would be a written agreement that they will cease and desist doing it. Then they will get a violation and they'll end up in justice court and we'll go forward on that premise. So we are on it, it's our conclusion that it's an unlawful use in that district, and we'll continue to pursue it in the ordinary course of business.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
How long after the order to remedy do they have to remedy?
Again, we gave them sort of a typical amount of time, I want to say it was August 1st or something, it's... I mean, tomorrow I can send it to you.
I don't know, Ken, I confirmed the county municipal code officer that it was mailed to both addresses that are available to us today.
And the timeframe chosen was, as I said, you know, typical in an order to remedy. Whatever it was, it wasn't any, it wasn't special treatment in either direction.
And if they don't comply with the order to remedy?
We, then they'll end up in justice court with a violation, which is subject then to fines and, and, and here's the real key thing that is worth noting. Our code does give us the right to go to Supreme Court in Ulster County to enforce that provision. That's really the teeth, because as you guys have mentioned before, and this is not specific to Mr. Henry's property, oftentimes, people who are in violation of a provision, treat that violation like a cost of doing business. You know, it, it's oftentimes not particularly prohibitive, just the fine, or going to court every once in a while. The real teeth of the provision is that we have the right to get an injunction against the use. That's where it would go next, if they didn't comply.
Second question. Katie, you ought to remind me what meeting, two meetings ago, I moved a motion and the direction was given, what we would do.
Right.
Immediate overlay district and tighten up the historic district codes.
Right.
When might we have the two parts?
You'll have them by the time I'm next at your meeting.
So the first meeting in August?
The second meeting in August.
Second?
That's, my, my attendance night is your second meeting of each month.
But could we have the...
You'll have it before that, because you'll, you'll have it in accordance with your typical agenda practice, so that you, whatever, I think it's, what's the Thursday before? Yeah, so you'll have it the Thursday before.
Yeah. Could we have it the first meeting? Because it will be coming from the planning office. Can we have it the first meeting in August? Both a recommended overlay district and a tightening up of the definition of an historic district?
I...
By the first meeting?
I may be able to, I just wanted to get the count up, because, and look at how the weeks actually fall.
It's the fourteenth is our, is our first meeting in August.
So you'd need it the Thursday before, which is the ninth, is that right?
Eight, yeah.
Eighth? And today is the, yeah, I can get you something by then. I, I do want to say though, in this, I mean, Kurt, please be heard, because you'll be part of this. But both Kurt and I, I think, I think at this table, and then I'm sure in correspondence at some point, have suggested that an overlay district may actually not be the best way to go. That's not to say that we're not in agreement that code provisions can be adopted to address this. And when we submit something to you, we'll explain all that in greater detail. But the short strokes of that are, that when you create an overlay district, theoretically, that district can apply to all districts, right? When you do that, you open up potentially a much larger secret can of worms. And in terms of the research that you, you need to do to prove that you've taken a hard look at what the impacts might be all over the, the village.
Well, is that, rather than assume we don't want to do that, could we have the overlay district discuss it and decide whether we in fact do want it all over the district, all over the village?
If that's, sure, we could definitely do it that way.
Okay.
I guess I missed a portion, I know about hearing of the overlay district, how in this case, what we're trying to do, of course, is revise and improve our existing H historic district regulations. For, for a community embarking on a historic district, an historic overlay district may be appropriate, but here, there's nothing about an overlay district that is necessary or that helpful in revising and improving our historic district regulations to prohibit certain...
The, the direction was twofold in the motion I made, Kurt. Two things. Overlay, which as Joe's just pointed out, will have impact on the entire village, but maybe we want to look at that. And two, second part, is tighten up our definitions in the historic district and try and deal with some of the things that are pitfalls in the code regarding the historic district now. Those were the two things.
Yes, but I guess I, at some point, I never got involved in the discussion of an overlay district and what it would, what it would achieve here. In other words, if we're saying that we want to perhaps apply these regulations to other portions of the village, then I understand completely. If that's what we want, the flexibility to do that, and I support the consideration of that. I think because the protections we're looking for in the Huguenot historic district may well have a place in one or more other districts. So if, if that indeed is, is the board's intent, then I, then I understand completely.
What we voted on.
Okay.
I'm a little, I'd like to caution us, because I've been thinking about this issue a lot. I had a lot of conversations with Ann, with Chris, and you know, this. I want to make sure that we're not killing a fly with a shotgun. Because there seems to be a bunch, not a bunch, two or three issues that are all tangled together. So there's the issue of particular tenants in particular building that are, are just, you know, basically annoying neighbors is one issue. Parking the lawns up till all hours. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's a second issue that's been raised about the appropriateness of rental properties as a concept in the historic district, which concerns me if we're gonna look at expanding anything village-wide in a community that has seventy-five percent of the people who are renters. It concerns me also because there are several rentals in the historic district right now. I know three of them, for example, three buildings, more than three, is owned by historic Huguenot Street itself. So the question, the problem is obviously not rentals as a, as a use. The problem is not, because even this building, even, let me give you one hypothetical. Say the Airbnb ad is sleeps nine on Huguenot Street, all the ad that, that Henry has up. I don't think we would have even heard about this ad if it was nine eighty-year-old retirees who like, you know, the, almost like the buses that go to Atlantic City, it was like a tour group of Huguenot descendants who are spending three days in the, in the Airbnb touring Huguenot Street. It'd be a different, we may not even have heard of it. So I want to make sure that we don't react to legitimate concerns and frustrations of a lot of our constituents with doing something that kind of is overkill because of the passions involved. So, for example, let me give you, just one example I thought of, because one of the comments that we heard a lot, a lot, when there's a group of people here, was more than one person mentioned how they were uncomfortable calling the police, they didn't want to do that, filed a complaint. And, and we've had a little conversation about how that kind of, it can put us in a bind, because the paper trail is useful when you're in politics and, you know, you're not there yourself. But what we have is violations of the noise ordinance, which we have a noise ordinance right now. We have violations of the law that is, is currently illegal for anyone to park on grass. I think the law actually says if it's not asphalt or gravel, you can't park there. So there's two of the complaints, just as an example, there was a complaint about the tenants parking on neighbors' VR and people up until three in the morning drunk and, and partying. But we have laws in the books now, and so I want to make sure we're looking in the right place as well. And Sally, you know more about this than anybody, about the holes and the difficulties in enforcing the noise ordinance. So I want to make sure we're not using the zoning law to deal with the quality of life issue. I, I think I made my point, I want to make sure that we're, we're using the right solution and identifying the right problem.
It definitely has to be carefully crafted, because the other distinction, Jason, that is important is, it may well be decided that there, that there are unique characteristics of the historic district that make the shotgun the appropriate approach there.
That's one thing, sure.
That doesn't mean it's the appropriate approach everywhere, right?
There's also the idea that, you know, and we actually talked about this, you know, if I live in my home, you know, fifty weeks of the year, and rent it while I do some kind of like vacation swap, which I know people in our community do.
Or a weekend a month.
Or, yeah, or a weekend a month, but the idea that I am the primary resident, and the majority of the time I am here with New Paltz being my primary residence. I think that there is, you know, and then of course, we do, you know, and I think you were the one who said this, Kurt, that you had a slippery slope with that, because then you're in, in the business of proving the nuances of how often somebody lives in their residence or not.
If they work in the cities, come up here, you know, twice a month.
But I think, you know, the idea that, you know, like going back to what Joe was just saying about real property and, you know, this is somebody's, somebody owns this, and you know, what they can and cannot do with their own property is, it shouldn't always be dictated to such a teeth. But I think what we're looking at here is something that is not somebody's primary residence, and that's
Right, it's, it's a...
One of the things that leads to a lot of the issues that are being...
Right, so for instance, with a true short-term rental, the, the risk that you get is, unlike the example you cited, where somebody's there fifty weeks a year and renting it out too, those people are in and out, gone forever. So even the laws that are on the books, you, you have sort of a tenuous grip on whether anybody, how much anybody really cares, right? Because the citation gets issued to that person who's then back in Long Island, you know, two weeks later. So again, I think all of us have made important points, there's, and, and as you have heard, the board has given direction for us to draft something, right, that will address the issue. And then it's gonna be a matter, you know, each and every line will be a matter of some discussion.
And I did, I do want to make clear too, I've got several calls from constituents concerned that we not throw the baby out with the bat who do use Airbnb and these other websites to rent out as our input. You know, to make a little shortfall or help get the mortgage paid. So, you know, to be conscious of it, that our constituents are also concerned about that aspect of it.
Right, there's not just one...
But I, I think we have to be very careful in New Paltz, and I think we are not as careful as we should be. And that is, that when we have a law that is supposed to be enforced, it be enforced equally and equitably for everybody. This is no longer, as far as I'm concerned, the old boys' network or the old boys' club, so that if you're a friend of somebody's, it's okay to do it. But if you aren't, it isn't okay. And I just want reasonable laws, enforceable laws. If somebody is using a property for commercial purposes, I don't care what you call it, a B and B, a hotel motel, if it's being used for commercial purposes, and it's not supposed to be in a certain district, then I think we have to enforce the law and make sure that it's done properly. That's all my feeling is.
Mayor?
Yeah, it's probably more to Joe. I have a question, because it sounds like you're, you're talking about the ability to rent an apartment or a home permanently, or with a lease agreement, as opposed to short-term vacation rentals. There's a real, is there a separate definition?
Definitely.
I've never heard anyone say you can't have a rental on vacation, they were saying you can't have a...
Well, that's why I said, the issue is the short-term rental, which again, you guys have all been hanging around long enough to know that the devil's in the details, I mean, you have to define that one way or another. You know, when have you been there a long time, and when have you not been there a long time, right? So you've got to examine the best definitions for those kinds of uses. And, and again, even that kind of use may be deemed to be acceptable somewhere in the town and yet be deemed unacceptable in historic history. I'm not suggesting, well, I'm saying that's one of the things that has to be considered.
Just one more detail, I know the devil's in the details, but I do know people, whether on Huguenot Street or throughout the village, who maybe two weeks advertising their time to rent their homes so they can afford to go to Italy. So is there, I mean, is there a way in the law to make it so Sue could rent her house for a one week to people she trusts, she's not gonna rent that to, you know, and go to, I'm just curious, like, is there a way to stagger that? So it's not just purely a rental?
Well, I think the idea of the, this being someone's permanent primary residence is how, is how to solve exactly that issue. Where, you know, we're not preventing people who are living here from, you know, making ends meet.
Because that keeps teacher network, it is teacher swap, so my friends of Ford will swap, and that, that family will come to their home.
Yeah, please, sir. I was looking, Joe, that, you know, stay focused on the fact that it is the oldest street in America. Tracy McNally made some very, very good points when she spoke two weeks, or three weeks ago, whatever, four weeks ago, and talked about, you know, the integrity of the street and the damage that the extra traffic causes and how that affects the tourism on that street. And it's, it's a very special district, it's very separate than the rest of New Paltz, and it really needs to be treated differently.
Well, I think that is why the board supported the motion, okay, to differentiate, tighten up the guidelines and the codes for the historic district, which have some holes in it. But also to have Kurt bring forth to us, as he has said he would do, and we have to understand, the impact of an overlay district will be greater than. It's a clear distinction, and he made that distinction. And so there are two different angles we're trying to look at this. But, you know, I, I think it is the value of the entire street that matters. And one of the things that I think we could consider, and I'll make as a motion now, if the board is willing to entertain it, that we ban all parking on Huguenot Street from Broadhead to Main Street.
That's already an agenda item, let's hold that.
No, it isn't.
Yes, it's a separate agenda, you just, you asked it, you wanted it as an agenda.
Oh, oh, you want to do that part, yeah, okay.
I'd have number twenty-one, no parking in Broadhead and Main and Huguenot Street.
I thought we could just take care of it now. Since we're on the topic of Huguenot Street.
Okay, well, so...
Can we finish?
Yeah, finish one topic at a time.
I thought we were good.
I, I hadn't spoken yet, and I'm very calm, waiting for everyone. Do you, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say that, I just got back from Jersey Shore today. We left Saturday morning, and Friday night, Rich went out and pounded eight cars in front of our house, two in their driveway and one in front of their house, it's eleven cars. There has been constant activity, I was going with our neighbors, told Sue all week. It feels to us very flagrant, do you know what I mean? It just feels like, what are you gonna do about it? I mean, Paul, who's our neighbor down the street, came and said to me, he said, "Ann, this isn't safe." They were, the cars were all around the bend, you know what I mean? Like, you could hardly get through, I mean, and it's like pitch dark. You know, so it feels to me like it's very flagrant, and what Sue had said is also that Huguenot Street is not a resort, it's a museum and a monument. It's not a resort for vacationers. And just today alone, how many people are coming and going today, Sue? I can't, I can't count.
Five, six, seven cars, and then there'd be nine, and then there'd be five, and then there'd be three, and then there'd be five.
And, 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 all day. Now, these investors or owners may come back and say, well, that was our family or whatever, but I have never seen, I mean, I can't tell you how many, right?
Well, keep in mind too, that it's not our place to say whether it's their family or not. And it's not our place to say, and it, having seven cars coming in and out of your house is not illegal. You know, there's not, that's not, it may be an annoyance, so I just want to make careful, like, we keep the line between the neighbor's annoyance and what the village board can't actually do about it.
No, we do understand.
Okay.
I guess the point I was making, Jason, is that everything that has been presented is we want to work with our neighbors, we are not their neighbors. I would, in all of my best respect, fellow for him. We want to work with everyone, it's not true, you know, nothing basically has changed.
Well, again, remember that, you know, the board, the village is already taking action on this.
Right.
The use that they're putting to it, or returning to it, is not appropriate. So there won't be seven cars there shortly, and the use...
Or if there are, it, it would be the people who own the property, and they're, and they could have seven cars, just them and their friends and family, you know, that, this might not solve that specific problem.
Right, and if seven cars may not be known as unbod to give you, but it's a tight corner and a tight little neighborhood, so everything gets noticed, right?
Right.
But let's keep in mind too, that we've already moved, that we've already, we're kind of, we're past this a lot. We're already past a lot of this. Because the use has been, has been, has been decided, and it's a, and it is a gray area, and it's a sketchy conversation, because there is no bright line between the, even if, if everything that we've heard about the, the scale of the rentals there and somebody who rents out quietly with no problems with neighbors, there's no bright line really between the things one from another. But we've got a workable definition under the code right now. 105 Huguenot Street does not meet that definition, therefore they can't continue doing what's been annoying you. So the question now is not what we do about 105 Huguenot so much, is what do we do in the future to prevent another repeat of this conversation?
And also bear in mind as we go forward, because I know it can be a source of frustration, not just for the public and residents, but even for the board sometimes, these legal wheels... These legal wheels turn as they turn. It's not, you know, it, it's not immediate, it's not automatic, there has to be judicial, if, if they fight it, and they may or may not, by the way, but if they fight it, there have to be judicial determinations that takes place in a, in a forum that's not entirely in any of our control. And it's important actually that we follow that track so that it's not perceived as if there's any, like I said, special treatment being shown in either direction. So just again, as, as the mayor has said, we, the board has authorized action, we've taken action and we're gonna continue to pursue that on as, as aggressive track as we can. So bear with us.
Um, I have stated a number of times, I know in this meeting and in private conversations with different people, that, um, we do consider that area, Historic Huguenot Street, the region where all the buildings are, as a museum. It's a walking museum, it's still a museum. Um, you know, to go from one house to another, you're within a museum. And with that, I really feel that our historical district coding should be looked at with that in mind. And not so much looking at the overlay districts because, again, like Jason said, that just opens up a whole nother can of worms. And a lot of the conversations I've had with people outside of, of the area, um, of Huguenot Street, who do use Airbnb and other forms of rentals, um, you know, they, they feel as if, oh, but tourism is a big industry in our county. Um, if you're gonna shut us all down, you're, you're shutting down, you know, I, I'm not saying they're shutting down tourism, but their implication is if, if you're taking that away from everyone, um, it's, it's, it could affect tourism. But I really don't feel like it has to be a village-wide thing. But I do agree that within your neighborhood, you live on a block that happens to be a museum. And I really feel that, that we should look at it with tightening our code. It's obviously already in there, otherwise we would not have been able to come up with this basically cease order. Um, so I think that just looking at it that way, um, there are so many other people in the community who are, are, you know, flagging us, um, you know, thinking that we're gonna stop everything. And I don't want the rest of the community to feel that way, but at the same time, you know, I, on, um, I, I walked down Huguenot Street on Earth Day and I noticed the cars there. And I was, I was thinking that it was vendors at Earth Day, you know, cause like we get all, everybody's gotta bring all their stuff down there. And I was kinda surprised that there were these big shiny SUVs as we walked back down, like seriously.
Right, yeah, see, very visual, I know it's TV, yeah.
So it was quite odd. And then I also, I rode my bike and I also saw the, the truck parked on your lawn, which, and it was Vermont plates, like all, all the cars that weekend were called Vermont plates. So it's pretty distinct in terms of knowing that, you know, it's someone coming from, from outside. But, you know, at the same time, I, I do want to just, you know, make the, the point clear that we want to protect the historic district. And, you know, anything we can do to further tighten the law is only gonna help. And, um, I wish I had more conversations with other people outside of your area who are concerned that we're going to halt tourism. So just for those people, Erin, you know, just in your reporting, if you just make it clear that we're not trying to shut down everyone, so.
Well, maybe Rebecca isn't.
The village board moves to shut down.
Leave people's go homes, is that what?
I made her laugh.
Um, so, thank, any other comments before we, we might as well deal with the item twenty-one, no parking in Broadhead and Main?
I'd like to move because.
Well, why don't we see, this is a second, there we go, thank you.
Do it.
Please, now Sally, what's, what's your question? Broad, between Broadhead and Main on Huguenot. Between Broadhead and Main, no parking.
Between Broadhead and Main Street. For, e- even if we weren't dealing with the problem we're dealing with, to have parking at that angle with, at that turn is insane. Because Susan is correct.
Not Broadhead and Main Street.
Um, what, Mulberry? What's Mulberry? I'm sorry, Mulberry and Main. Thank you, Ariana.
No, Mulberry and Main.
Broadhead and Mulberry.
Not Main.
It depends on how much parking is included.
No, no, I don't want any parking on Huguenot Street. I want us to consider no parking on Huguenot Street from Main Street to Mulberry.
No.
Except on Sundays when the Reform Church has already asked that we not.
It's a law, it's a huge, it's about a formal law.
I'm gonna make a friendly amendment.
You're not the one who can decide whether it's friendly, that's sad. You may, you're proposing that if she decides that it's friendly or not.
Yeah, but.
I was about to enforce on it.
Because you come up Huguenot Street and it's a very, it's almost a right.
Well, but there's no, there is no parking, the majority of Huguenot Street to Main Street.
It's not marked.
I'd like to get a memo from our planner about this. Can we do that?
I agree with that and that's what.
Or at least we wanted to see if it's a good idea.
No, 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 I like that idea, but I, I'm gonna add to it because Kurt and I had met with Tracy and we talked about not allowing through traffic, um, in the section that has the mo- the most historic houses on it. Because that's the whole thing is having cars go by and the trucks that go by without knowing that they're not supposed to be or blindly knowing that they're supposed to be.
That's a large area. That is a much larger issue than allowing parking. No parking.
I know, but while we're, if we're talking about this.
But you can't, people live on Huguenot Street. Huguenot Street is not just the stone houses and people have to be able.
But it wouldn't be all of Huguenot Street, it would be.
The area that you're talking about, there's nobody that, that would live.
There's no residential.
There's no residents where, where.
Yeah.
And that wouldn't resolve the question that Susan and Anne are raising with us and what Rebecca just spoke about, the parking is at that angle. And so in order to solve Tracy's problem and our residents' problem, we would have no parking in the street. Okay, from Mulberry down to Main.
If we're gonna base, if we're gonna base this on Tracy's.
From Mulberry to a Broadhead.
Mulberry.
If we're gonna base this on Tracy's recommendation, I'd, I'd like to point out a couple of things I think.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not basing it on, that's what I don't wanna do.
Okay, okay. Well, let, well, let, just come on, I wanna make this point because we dealt with the archaeology classes last time.
If I don't have a second, we don't need to worry about it.
Um, you have a second so far, um, from Ariana.
Thank you.
The, if the, if the reasoning behind this is to reduce the traffic, to protect the houses, the impact from one oh five Huguenot or any rental is nothing. Um, even if it is seven or nine cars, there's what, five, ten, how many times that, every Sunday for the Reform Church for services? Now, even HHS's own, if they own forty units, they have probably more cars driving down that street than one oh five Huguenot does. So it's not, if we're gonna do this, it should not, it should be based on traffic, not on preservation of historic resources.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to say.
But I do, I do know that the Gene Hasgats had a problem and that's why that was closed off years ago.
Right, exactly.
Because that was so close to the road and there was so much traffic. So it's, it should be a traffic planning question, not a historic preservation question. That's why I put that up.
My, mine is a traffic planning question and the idea of making this more like a, like a, you know, pedestrian area, uh, like a park essentially, a historic park, um. Well, I'm glad you, I'm glad you like that. But, uh, but yeah, I mean, it would, it is, it is something that would help preserve the houses that are there due to the traffic that would no longer be going by them. Uh, and it could even be a place where, you know, there's no longer asphalt and it really looks more like Huguenot.
This is a much bigger, you're raising a much bigger thing than what I am.
But I'm saying if we're asking our, our planner to, uh, write a memo on any of this, maybe we could explore some of our options.
But my motion is, my motion is not to make Huguenot Street an historic park. That's not part of my motion. My motion is a safety, as Jason very correctly pointed out, it's a traffic issue and a safety issue, not an historic preservation issue.
Do you wanna group, withdraw your motion and make one to refer it to the planner? Cause you wanted, that's what we wanna do for the next step.
I'll amend it to say, and refer to the planner for his recommendation.
Absolutely.
Let you know what you two think.
Well, I, you know, I, I definitely agree, um, that there's a huge sa- safety issue, that corner coming out of Mulberry. Um, at the same time, you do have people who are coming through to check out the houses, who will park for maybe fifteen minutes to half an hour and do a quick walk. So I'm thinking in terms of our planner, looking into it a little more extensively than we could discuss at a meeting tonight, um, to look at some different options with, you know, perhaps no overnight parking being one of the issues. Um, maybe from Mulberry to Broadhead being that it's a smaller portion of that dangerous curve, where, you know, perhaps from, um, from Broadhead to North Front, you have half hour parking yourself. So people are able to get out of their cars and, and walk. So, you know, that's all for Kurt and Mulberry.
Well, but.
You know, I just think to look at, at a bigger picture.
Okay, I don't, I don't disagree, but I also think we have to look at the ability, we're talking about a, trying to cultivate a walking and pedestrian community. Both the Reform Church and Historic Huguenot own a huge parking lot. Parking on the street should not be a part of looking at houses. You can park in the parking lot that's provided by the Huguenot Historical Society and walk five minutes.
So maybe, we, we gotta wait for Kurt to give his advice before we get it over.
Yep.
But Tommy, you haven't spoken, anyway.
Okay, Kurt, now that we've confused you.
No, no, actually, I'm, I'm okay with you, you've won the, the purpose of the role, but that's fine. It's the same to you, Brad, it's really.
It's nice to have the hassle.
Yeah, look at it.
Tom has something.
Advance the first meeting in, in, you know.
Okay. Tom's turn.
I don't wanna take very much time on this. I don't feel like I know enough. I would not have voted for your motion because I don't know how much parking there is. I don't know what we would be restricting and I don't know if there has been a single accident on Huguenot Street. I don't know if parking on the street has been a fundamental problem, a little problem or a big problem. So I would want to have advice from our planner.
Oh, I don't disagree with that.
Well, that's my position, you know? I'm glad that I had a moment to say something. So, thank you very much.
All in favor of Sally's motion?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Um, that's done, that's done.
You're welcome.
Why don't we, uh, is anyone else here for something specific on the agenda that we have to discuss?
Yes, can we remove Lisa?
Yeah, obviously, Lisa, I just wanna make sure, we'll do Lisa next, I wanna see, uh, what the orders after that. What was, you, you had to.
Um, I'm interested in one for Katie.
Okay. Yeah, we, we're kinda hopefully whip through some of these, um, but we'll move that up and up tonight. Um, all right, I'll move you go to executive session to interview Lisa Borges for the housing board. I'll favor.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be back in five minutes. Okay, so the planning board.
And I hereby move that the board approves.
How's it move?
So, Seth?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, where's my drawing cover of the agenda here? All right, so we have got six, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Bye-bye. Tell me the new term.
Six little laws.
How long is Lisa's term?
Oh, I don't know.
Are we doing environmental first?
Um, that one might just pass, actually. Why don't we, yeah, why don't we just go right down the list? We've got a full time. What I'd like to do is, um, cause actually when I looked through some of the notes, there weren't a lot of, there wasn't a lo- long, long amount of textual changes, so I thought maybe we could just go through, uh, these couple of laws and just, someone can stop me when they have something to propose that's alternate and I will start. I'm gonna start with a simplified legislative intent, cause I think it, it matters, it just took all the poetry out of it.
Okay, in my, which you did not, have not read yet.
I saw it, yeah.
I recommended that you keep the wording that you had that is currently in the code book, which I believe you wrote, Jason.
Possibly.
And it is very good.
The ones in the code book?
Yes.
Yeah.
Some of it is, yeah.
It, it is really good and it, it actually, um, sounded very similar to what you, what you came up with.
I might have written that law.
Yep.
Um, for this one, it really was a very similar kind of thing, I mean.
Cause I don't have it, I don't have the.
Um, for some reason my iPad is saying.
I didn't bring my code book.
Okay, all right, well, let me just ask you this.
It is disabled. I, I got it on earlier today and I, I, I had it. Oh, well, it's, I, I couldn't get on to the, I couldn't open the code page.
Well, let me ask you this, cause I have a four-line, a four-line one and just tell me if this one is better, is better than what is in the code book now, how's that?
Well, well, listen.
I gotta go over here.
Okay.
Oh, okay. How long is the legislative intent on the environmental commission?
Uh, where is that?
Envir- uh, boards and commissions, it's, uh, under general government, maybe?
You wanna take a look?
Um, yeah, that'd be amazing, that'd be great.
Well, Tom can get it up.
Oh, I can't.
I don't think it's, it's.
Thing's really old, right?
Yeah, that is a good, okay, don't visit it. All right, I have one of those.
It's chapter nine, I think.
Yes.
Yes.
It is chapter nine.
Where is it? Two thousand, two, twenty-twelve? No, that's, actually, that's twenty-twelve, all right.
Would it be, uh?
Would you prefer that you just take Rebecca's suggestions, my suggestions and Tom's suggestion and meld it all together, Jason?
No, I'd actually, cause I, it shouldn't take that long.
Right, it'd be nice to be done.
Thumbs up or thumbs down, which is better, like, that's really what I wanna know.
Cause it seems to be a general consensus.
But he hasn't read it.
No, I have read it, I just haven't, I haven't, uh, um, you know.
All right. Do you agree the old one does it?
I'm trying to find it. Establishment of Commission for Conservation of the Environment.
Isn't that it?
Yeah, that's nine dash two, it's, trying to click on a link.
Now look at it.
The one thing that I believe would be a difference that we wanted to add to a newer version and one of the reasons for making a newer, newer version was, um.
Rights of nature.
Yeah, including the terminology, rights of nature.
All right, I don't see anything about legislative intent, so let me, wanna, let me read you this and tell me if you think this is better than what's in the existing code. That's all we can do now. Um, I stripped it down to the bare minimum. The Environmental Policy Board shall propose public policy in order to A, repair damage to the environment, B, prevent the charmed from occurring, and C, defend the inherent rights of nature.
Fine.
Okay.
Is that better or worse than the others?
I think that's, does it all.
Yeah.
Okay, so that takes everything, so, and I'll, I'll give these to everybody.
But Jason, at the top, I would keep it the Environmental Conservation Commission because you talk about commissioners.
No, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change that to, uh.
You, you wanna call them commissioners, so leave it the Environmental Conservation Commission, then.
The reason that I changed it is because I thought that this is actually more specific to what they do and we can simply change, we call planning board members commissioners already?
Planning board members are planning board members.
Planning board members.
They're not commissioners.
We just change it, change it to environmental policy board members, throughout the rest.
Environmental policy commissioners.
Well, if you are going to.
Okay, wait, wait, hold on, hold on, hold on, I don't, I, if we start, if we continue this way, we're gonna spend fifteen minutes in every three words. So just, uh, just one person at a time, if it matter, if it matters to the intent. Okay, um.
Now, may I speak to it? Jason, commissioners have legislative authority, which is what you want these people to have. That is why it is a shade tree commission.
Yeah.
They have legislative authority. If you don't want them to have.
There's, but there's nothing in the word commission that, 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 that gives anything legal authority. It's, it's just a, a word.
Bill?
I, I think it's typically a matter of sort of practice or, like, commission is often used in a city context, whereas, you know, trustee is used, it's not that big of.
All right, you know, it's, it's, just, I don't, I don't wanna argue about this thing, but I'll change it to Environmental Policy Commission. There, done. Now, now I agree with itself.
And you're. And you're.
All right, let me, let me, let me, let me ask questions here, cause this'll go faster if I do. Is there any other suggested changes in nine point one, legislative intent?
Nope.
Nine point three, any suggested changes?
Yes.
Sally, what are those?
Um, you didn't, you deleted nine two and you need that in.
Ooh, please, thank you.
You're welcome.
You mean, you mean the numbering itself?
Yes.
All right, you're right, I'm sorry, this is wrong in the number.
Okay.
Nine two, uh, you're right, awkwardly numbered, very badly.
Okay, you gotta renumber.
All right, nine two membership. All right, nine two membership, I'll, I'll clarify, I'll say the, the title, subsection.
Okay.
Nine dash two membership.
Membership, let's just do membership.
And so, and please tell me what letter you'd like to change or add.
Okay.
I'm trying to just keep it simple.
I would like to change A to say each member and alternates is appointed by the mayor with approval board trustees for a two-year term and do your, you know.
Okay. So adding in that boilerplate.
Okay, that takes care of the bottom one, you can delete it. Um, I would not call them an appointee, I'd say, I'd say a voting member shall be known as a commissioner of the environment.
Joe, are you keeping track of these?
I am.
He had, I sent it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, but in terms of what the board likes and wants to get the, the, if we can get a five person by consensus.
Once we get consensus, right. So Sally, your pro- you're, basically A was being changed to include alternates in that appointment, right?
Alternates, yep, yep.
In the appointment process.
And now you're on B, which says what?
I'm just cha- changing such an appointee to a voting member shall be known. Because we're going to differentiate later on between research teams.
Right. Right, thanks, that's, that's very good, yeah.
Say it again, so the change is, I, I.
I'll give you this, I'll give, I'll send it to you.
No, I know, but here we are.
Okay.
Nine two, membership, letter B, uh, the third word in, uh, such an appointee changed to such a voting member.
Got it, right.
Because Sally's right, uh, we're, we're making the distinction between the full commissioners and the helpers, so.
I consolidated three different places you had a concept in, and what I said, fi- on C, five, the five members shall elect a chair and secretary annually and designate one member as a liaison to the village planning board who shall attend all planning board meetings.
Does anyone have a, a, a concern with any of the changes that were proposed so far?
No.
No.
All right, so we're, we're in agreement with which changes to make, so.
I, I think, yeah, I had read them and.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that, cause we haven't all five talked about it, so that's, that's why we can kinda look through them, so please keep going.
Okay. Okay, D, D got deleted, cause I already incorporated it in there.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Then, I ha- I put in.
Well, but there's more in D than just the alternate term.
All in one sentence.
Just a minute, I have a new D.
Okay.
Each commissioner shall seek two volunteers to be appointed by the commission as environmental policy researchers.
So better phrasing.
Okay. Okay, then, one, each commissioner shall work with their two policy researchers as a team. Your two, just as you have it, your two, each policy researcher shall serve a term of no less than one year. Three, with permission of the chair, researchers may participate in environmental board policy meetings but may not vote on any matter before the board, okay? Because, and I took out, unless appointed by the chair to fill a temporary vacancy because we've already taken care of the alternates up above.
With yours, correct.
Okay. Then I have an E, the policies to be researched by each team shall be voted on at the first meeting in June of each year and may be amended on recommendation from a commissioner to the board, okay? And I took out delete from time to time at the discretion of the chair.
Right.
I think it ought to be very process oriented.
All right.
Okay.
So is that everything for nine two membership?
That's everything for nine four.
And you, for Sally's, for Sally's, okay.
Yeah.
Does, does everyone agree with those changes, that you'd like to see those changes?
Yes.
Rebecca, you have a, uh, okay. So what, what are you proposing to change?
Okay, the, we did not address the, um, issue of staggered terms.
That, oh no, I did, I said that, that should be, I left Jason's staggered terms in.
You did, okay, all right. Okay, um, and the only other with, with the, um, in terms of the liaison to the planning board shall be, be in attendance at meetings. Um, I would like to add in the event of an absence, the liaison is responsible for seeking an.
I like that.
I love that.
I think that's good, good addition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't, you, you, I saw the comment, you don't wanna make it so that it's perceived as if maybe the meeting's illegitimate just cause somebody wasn't there or something, so it's.
Right, I, I think that's a very good.
Yeah.
Any objection?
Nope.
No.
Any other, um, amendments to nine two? Nine three duties, any?
Your, yeah, let's do your old numbers, cause we'll.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, well, I'll just, I'll keep, I'll just go in order, so nine five should be nine three.
Nine five.
Nine five, as you recommended it, um, okay.
All right, duties. Any other changes?
On number three, I suggested.
Eighty three, yeah.
Eighty three, instead of undo harm, I suggested provide remediation to undo harm to the environment inflicted in the past. Okay, cause you can't just undo harm, you have to remediate it.
Well, and let, if we're gonna, if the board wants to add something like that, I would say recommend or propose. I mean, they, cause they can't really do the remediation.
Okay. Okay.
Propose remediation to harm inflicted on the environment in the past.
Protest.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
Just makes sense.
Actually, you know, need to, you can torture it, but what policies do is provide, and policies aren't wrenches, you know? I mean, it's not policies.
Oh, I see what you're saying, the lead in sentences says propose policies that will, you're right.
Propose.
That will. The goal, these are the, this literally the goal of the policy.
Yeah, Tom is right, Tom is right.
Sally, is that, is already keeping it like?
So it would be providing remediation too.
What Tom's saying is that, we're already saying what you're proposing, by having the, the.
You propose, just a minute, you propose policies, one of the policies would be to provide remediation.
Was one, two, and three supposed to be the categories of policies that one was researching?
Right, so you're providing, you're, you're suggesting or propos- you know, I don't care what.
You got it, it, it works.
It works.
It's my bad, I just.
It works as written or works as amended?
It works as I have it written, as I have it written.
It works as amended by Sally if the board wants to go that way.
Joe, what, what's the concise way to say what Sally was proposing?
I, I think actually it works on the basis of Tom's comments, since the opening line.
But what works, can you read what works aloud?
Uh, well, go ahead, Sally.
Provide remediation to undo harm to the environment inflicted in the past.
Because that now read together says, research and propose policies that will provide remediation to. So it works, it's fine. If, if the board wants to do it, Sally's ideas work.
Any other changes in nine?
No.
No.
No, all right. Any other changes in nine?
Number four.
What do we want?
This is gonna beat that to death, but do we wanna say remediation or mitigation?
No.
You can't mitigate. You can't mitigate.
It's like I said, I was gonna beat it to death.
You can't mitigate the past, but you can remediate it.
Okay, nine, moving, oh Sally, you had another one for nine and five?
Four, yes. I would like to add after each commissioner.
Okay, A four, each commissioner?
And his, her team, because you've got a team.
Right.
Wait, 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 I have another, uh, recommendation for that.
What?
Uh, first of all, that, that should not be four. It doesn't, you can't say research and propose policies that will each commissioner.
It ought to be B.
So it's not B, that's the, that's the first thing.
I changed the numbering back, so.
And then secondly, what I'm propos- I would propose, Sal, is that the, this, each of these policies is not to be the policy of that particular commissioner, but the policies are the policies coming from re- by recommendation from the commission. And so I would say each commissioner shall be responsible for the completion of at least one policy per year that will, comma, upon approval by the commission.
I agree.
Be reported to the.
I think that's a very good addition.
I agree with that.
Absolutely.
Any objections, I heard that, sorry.
And I'm proposing to delete five. Because Tom takes.
Is one redundant or what?
Huh?
Redundant?
It's redundant and Tom now has taken care of it for sure.
Okay, is that, and, and will anyone, is that, yeah, the, the thought between what's, what's originally called five um, was to make sure that each of these little stuff is worked on something differently, you know, so we got five.
But they should be communicating and therefore would not be presenting.
Right, Jason's four is now B.
Right.
Because. And with Tom's wording, and with Tom's wording.
And five.
Well, hold on, five, Sally's proposing to delete five. Um, I wanna know, does anyone see any value in keeping that in there?
No, I do.
I don't.
Joe, any reason to keep it in?
The only reason I, it's a pretty clear statement, and so the only reason I would say is if you think.
I don't want one law a year coming from the ENCC.
Yeah, right.
I want five a year coming from the ENCC. How do we say that in the law?
It says, it does say it, each commission shall be responsible for the completion of at least one policy that will, upon approval by.
Yes. We should have one policy that lies down. Right, Tom took care of it.
Well, that, the only reason I left it in there was that at least one policy, whatever, it's not working.
Right.
Yes.
All right, anything else on, uh, duties?
Yes.
Change to C, D, and A.
Yeah, four becomes B and then.
It shouldn't, under old B.
Oh, I've seen.
Educate village residents about the causes and avoidance of environmental problems.
Is avoidance the right word?
Well, I think.
Can be, yeah. I mean, it, it's a word that works.
Okay. All right, then.
Educate those residents about the causes and.
And what we can do collectively.
Oh, you called remediation, you called that before.
To avoid or reverse the damages, because you don't just wanna reverse them, you don't want to continue them.
Avoid. Right. All right, so what was your first, causes and?
And avoidance.
And avoidance.
That is better than avoidance.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's, was remediation fit there? No.
Yeah.
Uh, no. Well, whatever, we, we never, we can change the number here, I think it's a better word.
No, because I know. Okay.
Yeah, right.
Avoid, no, no. It, I, I really do mean avoidance, because if, if somebody, if I didn't know and somebody told me, Sally, don't pour turpentine down the drain, I could avoid, because I, I know now it's not a good thing to do.
Prevention.
Prevention would work.
And your second cha- I know you're gonna give it to me, but your second change was to, to, the second thing in the second place.
Oh, eh, down, under, and we can do collectively to avoid or reverse.
To reverse.
I think, I think prevention is the right word.
For, for the first one.
As you have so.
Well, that's, that's fine with me.
I think objection to prevention.
You want prevention?
No, prevention is better word.
Okay.
Educate village residents about the causes of and prevent the causes of environmental problems.
And then to prevent or reverse.
And then later on.
Okay, prevent or reverse.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, good.
What we say we're, we can collectively, collectively do to reverse damage, can we throw an environmental damage?
Well, we, we can do collectively avoid or reverse the damage, that's the, that's what I meant.
Okay, okay.
Is it not?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think we already said environmental. Preventive is above, do we want to use both times?
I, I don't think I always.
I would use prevent both times.
All right, prevent both times.
I don't, I, I don't wanna be a pain in the.
Jump in, please.
So, so just.
Oh, do be a pain.
So, so read, somebody read it to me now, read the whole.
Okay.
Uh, I'll, I'll do it. Educate village residents about the causes and the prevention of environmental problems, what they can do individually and what we can, what we call, sorry, that's a typo.
What we can.
We can do, can do collectively to, uh, prevent and reverse the damage.
Okay, but Jason, do you like they or we better, because you need to be consistent there, what we can do individually?
Uh, all right, I guess we is fine.
Okay.
Joe, you got all that?
Yes.
All right. Anything else in, in duties?
On D, on D.
Yeah. We and we, yeah.
Jason?
Yep.
On D, I would like to add after, you just have nonprofits. I think it should be nonprofit environmental groups.
You're looking at, at what's in that, what, the old D.
Under D, nu- your old D, coordinate.
So let's be the new B.
Let me read it to you. Coordinate the efforts of environmentally based community groups, SUNY Newport Student Clubs, nonprofit environmental groups, and government agencies at the local county, regional, state, and federal levels to achieve positive environmental outcomes.
Is that necessary, given the rest of it?
Yes.
I know you think so, Sally, or the rest of us think.
Well, why are you coordinating, what you want them to do?
Because we're, the whole point of the legislative intent comes at that, that's what I.
I, I, hey, I know so many times where intent is open and subject to interpretation and your interpretation and mine might be different, I think that the whole point is to come, come up with po- positive environmental outcomes, we gotta say it.
Uh, it's, I mean, it doesn't hurt.
I mean, I think, I think he has to let it says environmentally based, then it is, then it lists all the things that are that are groups or organizations that are based on the environment.
But you wanna coordinate their efforts for what purpose?
So it's efforts of the envi- oh, okay.
You see what I?
Okay, but then, then that should be added at the very end.
That's what I do.
Not after nonprofits.
No, no, Sally is adding it after.
No, no. I'm adding it at the end. Let me read it one more time.
Okay.
Coordinate the efforts of environmentally based community groups, SUNY Newport Student Clubs, nonprofit environmental groups, and government agencies at the local county, regional, state, and federal levels to achieve positive environmental outcomes.
Oh, well, I guess I was, I was focusing on where you added environmental after nonprofits.
I know what, yeah. Right. And, but the whole point is.
Environmental groups is a separate, it's nonprofits, comma.
No, it's nonprofit environmental groups.
Okay, all right.
Not all nonprofits would be involved in this.
Are there for-profit environmental?
That's what I was saying, that it's.
It could be for-profit environmental groups, I don't know too many.
She's care of all of those things being environmentally based.
Okay.
Joe, does it change the meaning for intent?
It, it does, I.
And, are, anyone, did that change?
No.
No.
All right, move on. Anyone, uh, is that it for duties, please?
No, yeah. Um, number two.
Eight two?
Eight two, yes, slow or harm, halt harm to the environment currently taking place.
Yeah. Oh, that's. Yeah, that's a bad phrasing, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was just, we scrapped. That will just be scrapping my whole words.
I like, oh, you're take, you're suggesting take currently out?
Slow or halt harm to the environment currently taking place, as opposed to where we said.
Happening right now.
Happening right now.
Okay.
Alright, anyone object?
No.
Alright.
I have no problem.
Uh, what's that? You don't like that change?
No, she's fine, she's such a okay.
Oh. Uh, anything else on the duty subsection? Moving on to what's, what is now, is, um, the original nine dash five, property real and personal, which is now nine dash four, anything to be changed?
Yes, please. I'm going to suggest.
Just give us the line down, so we can find a clue.
I'm gonna suggest instead of reauthorize, when re- what?
Where are you looking at?
Nine five, your nine five, property real and personal.
At the end, in the middle, the beginning, or?
Hmm?
Sentence.
Where, where?
But.
Right on be- at the very beginning.
When authorized?
Yeah, I would ti- replace that with when requested by resolution of the village board. The environmental.
That came from the state enabling legislation, so does that change the meaning Joe, authorize?
Yeah, I, be- because authorization, what that implies, and you can obviously talk about this, but what that implies is that a vote was taken. So if you say requested, I I feel like it it it's not really a legally significant word.
But you see what I, I don't want the, I think there is confusion here, and we talked about this last time. I believe nobody except the village board can accept property at all. Now, they can recommend us, say you wanna give some land, Jason is the chair of this commission, you and he are friends, you have a conversation, you say I wanna donate.
I agree, I.
Okay.
You know something, I can clear this up a little bit, because that's generally my understanding as well. But this language, this section was actually taken, I think, cut and pasted from the New York State Village Law, enabling statute that allows us to form environmental commissions various times. So it's actually environmental boards, commissions, CAC, most communities call them, communities call them CAC, Conservation Advisory Commission, are actually specifically allowed by state law to do what this section says, so this is just taken from state law, so even if this wasn't in, it would still have that power, I believe, Joe, is that correct?
I think that's true, but I do.
You can take it away, I believe, we can restrict it.
Yeah, and and I'm not sure though, because this was one of my comments as well. You just have to think carefully about whether you really want this board. No, it's, you you may, for instance, wanna create a separate entity that actually acts as the holding entity for such properties.
I'm thinking like of the Molebrook Preserve or Parkland.
I'm not sure this board. Exactly, it's a perfectly acceptable practice and concept, I'm just not sure this board, which is really a research.
We can scrap the whole section and add a later bit of meaning.
This, no, just a minute, this does not say what goes on with the Molebrook Preserve. What happened is that was deeded to the town.
No, no, I was thinking as an example of public property.
The town, the town put into easement with the Wallkill Land Trust, they administered, but the town accepted the gift.
But there are other parcels and theoretically, something like the Molebrook Preserve or open space that's bought, but through an open space around the village folks. I'm thinking of 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 real world examples that the ENCC might have a relationship with real property, that's what I'm saying.
I don't think they should, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that is the, that is the policy discussion, you guys have to decide whether that's.
Which is where the word authorized is best used.
But that, I I think we need a whole clarification of this, and I think we need it based on whether we think another group other than the village board can accept land on behalf of the village of Newport.
Well, Joe.
But they're not really, but but they're not really doing it without us. It, like, you know, you know what I'm saying, there, the fact that it, we have to authorize it means that it is not a group other than the village board accepting the land, it is us accepting the land.
Well, may may I ask, uh, if it re- if it requires either the authorization or passing by resolution, uh, an an act by the board, then this group is actually not receiving.
Right.
Anything, I mean, they don't have title or ownership, as the village would have title or ownership.
Well, that's.
It depends on the resolution.
That's, if if the person who has, the the entity that has title or ownership is the entity whose name is on the deed. So you can establish sort of a s- a a pseudo, like a trust, right? Eh, that has its own separate identity, and and you can place land in in the ownership of that.
Okay, I understand, it can be a land, that there can be a land trust or a conservancy.
Right, so the simple answer to Sally's question, can it be done, is yes, it can. The bigger question is, is that what you wanna do, and if it is, is this board the board you wanna get?
Right, and I don't think we do.
I mean, I don't view this board, the way it's written up right here, as really a land holding entity.
Right.
I mean, owning land has to do, you have to think about things like, is it being mowed, is it being maintained, is it, I mean, that's not really what this board's equipped or set up to do.
That that would be my, uh, that would be my position and my, uh, objection to the way it's formulated, and I'm sorry I didn't think of it before, so thank you very much, uh, so I I would suggest that we drop this.
Does anyone think we should leave it in?
I think we should rewrite it.
Well, no, Sally, you already have your opinion Sally, yeah, they're very clear.
No, I think we ought to rewrite it.
Um.
Well, let me, let me ask you, does it, does anyone else think it's, who thinks it's important that this section stay in the law? I mean, cause remember, we can always write another law later, if we wanna change, you know, a whole other section.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, as an entity, that this group is not the entity that we're missing, we do.
But they could make recommendations to us.
That's what I think, that's what I think.
Yeah.
That, they could say, we recommend that you accept the gift of.
That the village accept the gift.
The village, accept in the name of the village, the gift. The village that can then turn around and say to a land trust, we want you to administer it.
Right, exactly right.
That's what I think we should do.
Okay, tell them what you think.
I think anybody could do that, you know, my cousin can do that, to make a recommendation to other.
Oh, great.
Just goes available, then we can apply the environmental policy.
I have a number of.
And does he wanna mow the lawn in public park?
Somewhere in the, I don't know, forty-three cousins. But no, I I don't think, I don't think that this body is the right body to do that, and I don't, and I don't think this adds anything to what we can do now. We can create a land trust or a conservancy.
And frankly, under what's already been authorized in the draft law, among the policies that any one of these commissioners might wanna recommend is, let's embark on a land acquisition.
For example, that would be one of the author- or one of the authorized actions. I think that this section is best struck.
Okay.
So maybe a useful tool, but not in this context.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so let's strike that.
Okay.
Alright.
I think once you get recommendations like this, that would be like six months from now, if this thing is really working and they say to you, here are the opportunities to acquire open space, that might absolutely be the next law you adopt, right, is to create a land conservancy or something, but.
Yeah, so you need to take all this.
Right.
Alright, so, uh, nine, six reports is now nine, four reports, and Sally has, uh, what was it, the new month?
I.
Remember that one?
I just want to do something on C.
Which one, one C or two C?
One C, I want you to clarify what you mean, because you do not want this commission to be budget driven. And right now, that's what you have it worded as.
Well, they're all budget driven.
Based. No, you don't wanna say based on the final budget of the coming fiscal year. You want them to be making recommendations, which might cost us a bundle, and we have to weigh and think that out. I don't want to ask Ariana, Ariana, please tell me, what are some environmental rules I should have, but just remember, you only have a dollar.
Okay, well, actually, so maybe it's a matter of I should reverse one and two, cause if you look at two C, in December thirty first, this, and I changed, I I'm up to the timetable a little bit, cause we usually do it at the January, but December thirty first, say, if if this other one, December thirty first, twenty thirteen, I want, um, a draft budget that incorporates what you're gonna be doing this coming year.
I had.
By June first, you know, six months later, you know, now that the budget is adopted, if there's any changes coming up, I'm not under the board for, I was saying, I was saying for the real meeting for whatever, but it's confusing.
Jason, I don't, I don't disagree, but I did take out by December for budget, and I added number three, which says by February first, complete and submit a tentative budget, cause that's what we require of all of our committees.
Yeah.
And I don't think that by December thirty first, necessarily.
Okay, so let's, let's do them one at a time then, so one C, um, I mean, I don't, I don't really, it's not that important, it's not key to the whole thing.
You wanna strike it?
Uh, it, does anyone else have an opinion on it, think that that will be useful?
I think, I think that the idea in it is useful, you're asking, uh, that as a ma- as a matter of, uh, the enabling legislation, that the chair every year.
Put this in writing, yeah.
Put in writing a report that makes recommendations about restructuring or.
Then I've ended it needs and strike out based on.
Okay, that's fine, any objections that killed based on, you know, because even if the report is no change from last year, it's still on paper that we put.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Alright, so now, number two, Sally, you had a change, so obviously you're gonna December thirty first.
I I just, I I don't have any changes in number two, I took your.
You took C out.
I took C out and made it three.
Alright, so it's eight, so, okay, so that's, I I don't, I don't have a problem with that, anyone have a problem with that?
And and with that, I said, and, but I also added, after coming budget year, which shall include a schedule of trainings to be attended in the coming year.
I thought I had that somewhere.
It's D.
It's D.
Oh, oh, it's gonna be, oh.
Yeah, I consolidated.
You wanna put that in, what?
Any objections?
C?
Okay.
No, alright, and obviously there's no problems with three, four, and five, section three, four, and five.
I would like to move to acceptance at hearing.
Oh.
Wait, wait, one last thing?
Um, it said, I think severability, should it be severability?
Which one is it, Joe, severability or separability?
They really are both used.
Which one sounds cooler, anyone having an opinion?
Both accepted.
Separability sounds really cool.
Se- separability, yeah.
From now on, Joe, in a template, we're using severability.
Separability.
Official village policy.
Okay.
Uh, alright, so with that, uh, Joe, you have these changes?
I'm giving you mine.
I do, and I'm gonna take Sally's stuff.
And you can write, and you can write that as a copy for your two first, I think, right?
Is there any, Jason, we can have a hearing on this in the first?
That's what I was gonna ask, is do we need an actual, well, yeah, once we set the public hearing, we need a formal document to give the public. Do we need, can we set a public hearing tonight on this with these changes?
You can set it, and then ha- you know, but that, you'll still have what, at least two weeks before your next meeting, right?
Yes.
Fourteenth.
So how, when would you have to have the law, when would I have to have the law back to you for posting?
Thursday before.
Thursday before.
Which is what date, I just wanted to make.
We can tomorrow.
The, I think they discussed.
Then we can do that, yeah, I can have it ready for that.
Just a minute, we already dumped on you some stuff with one oh five, can we do it for, can we set the hearing for the twenty eighth of August, that gives us time in case we need to make any more changes? And get it off.
So moved, all on Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
And on my second?
I did.
Rebecca's second, alright.
Okay.
Alright, good, let's just, let's, we can pick up the pace a little bit now we have the.
Good, that's exciting, that's very exciting, that is a very, very interesting proactive law, I just wanna say, I I, I mean, I've been doing this a long time, I really love.
And yes, for Rebecca and Tom, eh, everything. Cause I think we have got a good law.
Number, let's just go down the list, uh, let's do the same thing, cause, you know, I I tried last time to separate that from two conversations of the housing law, but let's just go do the same thing we just did, and now, cause I have a, my copy of the the landlord thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I I'm not sure I have it at all, cause there's some of it that's in the archives, and I'm not sure I caught all the changes, so.
Well, and Joe has now reviewed it.
Yep, I reviewed them both.
Uh, this is my folder.
That's yours.
Unless I stole your copy.
Would you think it would be better for you just?
I did something.
I do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest, I'm gonna give my philosophical discussion of what the primary differences are, and then I'll give it.
Okay.
That's not a good answer, I mean, I, I.
So let's, uh, maybe we should do this one and then take a five minute break.
Well, how about Joe tells us what he thinks?
Yeah, I, here's, so here's my,
Okay.
Self-checking the file.
Just make sure that I'm just squizzing. Um, here's my assessment of the two laws. Um, both of them have, as is always the case, this is not a criticism, they both have some syntax and and, you know, small changes that I would make, just in terms of legal language and and things like that. But for the most part, the fundamental difference, which I'm sure is not lost on any of you, is that the original law proposed by the mayor has a provision which would allow, which would require landlords to actually reimburse displaced tenants, um, for the cost of their being displaced. Um, I, as Jason and I think indicate, I wasn't here, but my understanding is that the last meeting, this came up. I did research this, I see no prohibition against the provision, I I don't see anything that makes it patently, you know, unlawful to adopt such provision. As a policy decision, therefore, you guys need to decide whether that's an avenue you wanna pursue, I will tell you with some confidence that if that's adopted, you'll get some resistance, and you may even get an Article seventy-eight the first time you try to enforce it. I also feel comfortable saying that it will be a difficult provision to enforce, uh, just in terms of the idea of, you know, where does, what's the reasonable geographic distance, you know, how long do they have to pay that bill? For instance, let's say the landlord, by virtue of having failed one of these inspections, it may be legitimately so, maybe maybe really the place is uninhabitable, and they should have failed. And so they lose their CO, out go the tenants, let's say the landlord fixes that problem in fourteen days, and now, the tenants don't want it back. The, you know what I mean, so now he's done his job, he's remediated the problem, maybe he's even written a check for them to go live somewhere else.
Well, wouldn't he just be able to stop payment on a new place, is that, is that's their choice?
Right, but it, but these are just, a- again, it's, it, it would be a challenging provision to enforce. It's a novel provision, it has, it obviously has some teeth, and probably will get the attention of of landlords, I understand why it's been proposed. Um, and so again, all I can really say is, if you, my suggestion tonight was gonna be that you guys potentially walk through the more innocuous sections of both, you know, cause the definitions are largely the same. There, Sally, you may be aware of certain other specific differences between this and the other that you can discuss. Then my suggestion would be that I merge these, these two laws, I could even, you know, red could be the first one, green could be the second, where there are differences. So you've got something cohesive to discuss at your next meeting, and then you just have a policy decision to make about what you wanna do.
Now, Ariana and I had talked, and we thought the displaced tenant part could very well go in under an owner who rented and failed to register, and the consequence for getting caught. In other words, you didn't register, you weren't inspected, and you got caught for renting without registration and permission, and as a result.
A tenant relied upon your representation, you could provide housing.
Right, then, the displaced tenant, that Jason, if, I would
Right.
very, be very happy to have it in that section, and Ariana and I agree, that that would be the consequence for that.
Right.
And I would be very happy if you took the two, because a lot of it is just that we move things around.
I agree, yeah.
Or we flush out.
Yeah, I'm having, I I had a hard time following, in the same way, I had, I had a hard time following the changes I made compared to the old code. There's so many phrasing changes, I had a hard time seeing what was substantive.
That's, so I would like to suggest, which I was hoping we might have have had tonight, but there was a miscommunication, that we asked Joe to put these two together, merge the two together, and the displaced tenant, we are agreeable, Ariana, that that would go in under.
How about this, how about this, Joe, let's see if I can consensus on this, yes, do that, except where there's, um, where there could be a question, in terms of, there's two legit policy options, we could deci- this, uh, decide.
Then decide each one.
Then then just give us both, give us the minority a point in a little commentary.
I'll give you both. Right.
You could also do that, or have them in the, in the corner.
That could be in blue.
We got a fork in the path here, which way do you wanna go?
That's exactly what I'd like to do.
And that should be in blue, so we know which one, that, you know, we're, we're choosing.
Three different policies.
Alright.
Alright.
Um, Rebecca, yes, what was your?
Okay, I have a, a, kind of sort of a technical question, where can we get a more original copy of this?
I can email you the, a Microsoft Word version.
Well, I can certainly tell you, Katie, at, in order to do my job, I mean, I have some conversion software, but it's, it's more work than it's worth.
I'll email everybody, I will email everyone.
If I could get both.
I'll email everyone a Microsoft Word version of, of my original, I don't.
Who's got a Microsoft Word version, somebody must.
You do.
I've, no, well, I know I've got a copy, but I don't think it's a word.
You do.
Do you?
The clerk scanned it and sent it.
No, but.
I don't, that's not, yeah, that's a P, yeah, that's not a word document.
Oh.
Something you can edit.
Well, you can send it in Word, can't you, Kate?
Not if you scan something.
But somebody must have typed it.
I did.
So you have it in Word.
You can send it.
I'll send it.
Just send it as its original Word document, not as a scanned document.
Or whatever, the the, like, the word processor document.
Okay, I'll try.
Try.
I'll try, huh, I, I had so much trouble with this, you don't know.
Well, and to be honest with Sally, don't get yourself any news, I have some conversion software that will do it, it's just, it's just extra editing for me, cause it always screws something up. But so, if you can do it in Word, it'd be great.
Then, I'm making a. Then.
In Word.
Document in Word.
Alright, um, let's go through nine, wait, cause I don't.
Did we agree on all that, I mean, we're.
Yeah, we agreed on our next steps with this, yeah, so, but what what's the deadline for that, Joe?
Well, I, if you guys, again, I'm gonna be here on the twenty eighth, so if, if there any.
We meet two weeks.
I'd like it, the first meeting.
Yeah, can we get that one, cause it's gonna come on.
I can get it back to you by then, yeah.
Because then we could have the discussion on which.
Yeah. Could you have it, oh, uh, two weeks in Thursday?
Yep. Yes.
So we're gonna get a draft local law from you.
Correct.
That will merge the various recommendations out of it.
Right.
And if they're, they're contradictory, we'll have both options there.
And we'll have both options, and whatever color, we'll be able to differentiate.
There's a real choice.
Red, green, blue.
And it will be able to vote on this at the next meeting.
No, you you won't, and so it's probably good opportunity to just give you the basic, cause we do have some new board members here too.
No.
The way the local law adoption works is, first of all, if a, if a matter is subject to seeker, you have to have a seeker, um, approval as well before you take any action. The other thing is that the law has to be on the desk of the village clerk for at least eight days prior to it being adopted.
Alright.
In the form that you adopted. Um, now, as long as we're doing this little class, I'll tell you, that the board, if if the board deems it, actually, if the mayor deems it significantly important enough, or the acting mayor, at any given time, deputy mayor, whatever, um, that it needs to be adopted and deems the change is minor right away, like, let's say you really have something, you you need to get on the books right away. That can be certified by the mayor as such, and you can overcome that eight day regulation, but generally speaking, it has to be in its adopted form for eight days before it can be actually voted on.
Okay.
So what will happen, and remember that what you're gonna get in this case is this merged version, undoubtedly, you'll have more to talk about anyway. Like, you'll say, we're gonna take green and not red, we're gonna, you know, and so you probably will end up voting on it on the twenty eighth, which is not that either, cause I'll be here on the twenty eighth if there's any further questions.
And it's important enough, and has to be with impact, it's worth taking.
You waited this long, wait two more weeks.
For the, for the final, for the discussion.
I would say that this is, uh, an impactful.
Three quarters of constituents are renters, so you can imagine. Uh, alright, so the other, this last one, and then we'll take a break for five minutes to stretch our legs, um, the type one secret actions, I didn't hear a lot of comments last time. It's relatively straightforward, last fall, I proposed the version that had a whole bunch of criteria. With this one, because it requires a map, and we have a map of the wetlands and parcels in the village, I figured I'd put that one forward and add to it later as we get more.
I asked at the last meeting for an updated map, because a map of two thousand seven has changed greatly.
It hasn't, actually.
It has, Woodland Pond is built that had wetlands.
Right, these are, but here's the thing, these are all potential, that's, that's what I wanna talk about, because I I I forgot about this, this is not, um, proofed, and what this law would do is, is these boundaries and the parcel lines show all the areas where we may geologically have wetlands in the village. So making a type one action doesn't mean that we're automatically protecting any of this, it means we have to double check that there's no wetlands, and that involves looking for three indicator species, for example.
I have no problem with the law if we take off the map, and.
We're, we need the map to pass the law.
There's nothing that says that we need.
It's state law.
Okay.
The map that required.
Yeah.
What, what?
So actually, let's, actually, maybe we can, I'm sorry, Rebecca, then Kurt, then Joe, but I wanna hear about this, whether the the changes have geologically over the years.
Okay, I'm I'm just curious, what, um, a new map would cost if we were to go back to Hudsonia?
This costs us somewhere between seven and fifteen thousand dollars, two hundred.
Why can't we just update it ourselves?
Um.
That's what we have a planner.
I don't think we have the knowledge.
We're not qualified, yeah, we're not qualified.
Hmm?
We don't have the knowledge to do that.
No, and by the way, this this version, unlike things like traffic counts and a lot of other features on maps, development you pointed out, like Woodland Pond, in in this case, um, uh, five or six years. in, in this case, um, five or six years does, does not make a wetland map that will need delineations when it comes down to project-specific review. Delineations by wetland professionals, okay? Um, this is really about as good as it gets and that refers to even what the feds do and what the State Department of Environmental Conservation does. They, they're the first ones to say, when it comes down to project-specific, um, secret processes, you certainly must verify what is mapped. It's more of a, a guideline and, and a, a red flag to let you know there's something.
It's, it's almost a map to show where you don't need to bother. Because what it says is, in these boundaries, we have to do this double checking. But if you're, if, according to that, if you're, a proposal on Prospect Street where there's no parcel identified, you don't have to bother with all that process. So I mean, I'm trying to discuss the impact of this all.
Maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding, because I like the law. But it, say you had, had built a house in two thousand four, okay? And you protected wetlands and everything was fine. And now you've got four children and you want to add on to that house. Are you going to create a problem if what you did was acceptable in two thousand four? Let's make it two thousand seven.
Right.
Okay. What you did in two thousand seven was acceptable.
Look, you know, I'll give you an example. How about this? How about, um, for argument's sake, let's say that someone, that Kurt wants to build a, a boutique boot store right next to Woodland Pond. I don't know, something, right? So I'll give you an example. Now, we know in the upper right-hand corner.
I'll be so into that, by the way.
No, I'm going to steal it. I want percentage of you in an opening one.
Yeah, come on. You're playing here.
Okay, here we go. Look at the, look at the upper right-hand corner of the village map. Where, where Woodland Pond is clearly built right over where the delineation is.
Right.
All this map tells us, and, and Tom and Kurt could explain this better than I, making that a type one action means that Kurt, Kurt's boot store is now a type one action. Means we have to look at this wetland issue. But.
Okay.
But, and here's the important part. Say you're Sally, you're the wetlands inspector, you're Spider Barber, you know all those plants, and you go out there and see, oh, well, yeah, the map says that Kurt's stores in the wetland, but obviously this building is here and it's, and it's not anywhere near the wetland now. Step of approval, no impact of wetlands, and that closes that chapter of the planning process and then move on to parking or the other, whatever the next issues. So all it requires is that we double check that there's no wetlands being impacted.
If that's all we're doing.
Does that, does that explain the type one action that comes into the map fairly well?
Yeah, it puts it, it puts it in.
It requires the planning board to address the issue.
A heightened seeker review.
That's fine.
It requires the planning board to answer the question. Are there wetlands and if so, how are they impacted?
But in other words, this is okay to use as a guideline.
Yes, my, my understanding is that the information used is from about Sonya.
Sonya, uh, remote sensing, no ground truth in the species, the indicator species.
And about two thousand and seven. Okay, this is as good as a.
Yeah, it's actually two thousand six. Would you like your report?
I think, oh, yeah, well, that'd be that.
Okay, the in, the information.
Actually, well, Katie, can you make a PDF of this and send it to everybody? Since that way, I can make sure everyone has it.
Would you make, send it to everybody? Make sure I get my copy back.
Yeah, I'll give you that, sorry.
I certainly can turn this way. Yes, the, um, and of course.
So you were saying this is the mapping that we did consulting is about as good as you get for this type of mapping?
Yes, in fact, it's better than the National Wetlands Inventory, which strives to identify potential federal wetlands. Um, and it's, it's better than the states, of course, and their threshold being a minimum of twelve point four acres.
Right.
Um, and, and.
But as long as Jason, who wants to add to his house and he built it under proper land board approval in two thousand seven, is not penalized for having done that, and that all we're going to do is look at the wetlands because he's close to it. On the, if that's what we're doing, if that's what we're saying, I'm content.
There's, there's no intent nor is there any authority to penal, to go back and penalize someone in the, in the way that we suggested.
But the next time you expand your house, you got to check with us to make sure you're not going to do any damage.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all.
For example, I mean, if, if there was, if there was a home built at that time, no, there's no penalty for that. However, if there remain wetlands adjacent to the home, then that will come into play in this process.
The report Tom and Rebecca that I gave, who's gonna, oh, that report tell, very clearly deletes where each and every place is and why it is considered a wetland.
And includes in these maps, for the public study too, here, the, the map that we're looking at and will be available on the village website shows not only the outlines of where potential wetlands are, but also the necessary buffer to protect the wetlands in the center because you need to protect it from some bottom.
But I would like to suggest that if we're going to put it on the website, Jason, that some geographical demarcations are made so people clearly understand where they are.
Yeah.
Okay? In other words, North Putt Corner should show that road.
Do you think we could get your data layers for this or does the technology change so much and so sudden?
No, actually.
Somebody, somebody be using something that can read?
Yes, in other words, having, again, having worked for, um, um, at least one of the community that, that commissioned a, a very, very similar habitat study, and I can see from the cover of it, um, there, I didn't know that there wasn't any indication of roads. I mean, isn't there an indication?
It's just the, the map is not as clear as it's.
It's not, if I, if I were, if I had a piece of property, I could, and I wanted to develop it properly. I couldn't be clear where it was on that map.
Eight and a half by eleven copy, but I'll make it.
We could make up a table with every property listed at some point.
I just want to give you a color larger version either on, 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 on CD.
We'll figure this out.
Whatever. May I move to say?
Well, then Tom and Ariana.
The planning board actually used this, uh, study in the past because we have had, uh, properties where there are existing homes, sometimes, uh, multifamily homes, where there have been additional proposals to build. And we've identified that there are wetlands on some of these properties. Not very far from, from here. And, uh, so thi- this has been taken into account by the, uh, home, the, the owner of the properties as they've been developing new spaces.
But, but the whole point of this is, and Jason recommended initially in a very different, well, not different, but this is the cleanup version a long time ago, about a year ago, wasn't it Jason?
A little, little under, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to move that we set a public hearing.
Actually, we have to refer this to the village and county planning boards, but Ariana had a comment earlier. Did you know?
I, I think I said it.
Jason Cantley still set the hearing and set the hearing for the cycle meeting in August.
We had to wait forty-five days for the county planning board to get back to us, so we set it for September.
Well, thirty, but, um. Forty-five for our.
Well, we're not sure about this time.
Yeah, you, by the way, it used to be forty-five. Now it's thirty for county, um, for Gina Mellon.
Oh, you know, we went through this because it, we don't want to sit in the public hearing now because then we could use a maximum timeframe. If the county boards get it back to us sooner, we can have it in August.
Right.
So we want to wait till we get the cons back before setting the public hearing.
I would, I would move to prefer.
Yeah, that's the most.
I thought the planning board, you know, had all reasons.
I don't, Tom, you don't remember this.
I don't remember this.
Okay, then I agree.
And either way, we're going to, the earlier version would have had a lot more.
I'll second your vote, man.
Alright, any other discussion before we start?
I have typos and things.
Okay.
Can I just cover them real quick?
Well, why don't you just start? I'll change it before you.
Okay, well, here.
Also, and separability should be changed to separability.
It's, it's things like which commissioner it says the commissioner, the department. And I'm, I'm assuming that's D E C.
You know, I'll change, I'll change. Give it to Katie because she, I'll have her do the clean copy.
Yeah, it's just like, I don't know what commissioner. It could be any commissioner.
I'll look into that. Anything Katie can't do, we'll do by email tomorrow.
Jason, there are a, a couple of, um, there are a couple of things that this is, this accomplishes more than one thing. It accomplishes more than type one, and I'm sure this is by design. It also seeks to establish CEAs in the village.
Right, we don't have that.
And of course, there's a process for that. So in other words, I don't need to, um, take any more of the board's time with what's, if you want to accomplish those at the very same time, there's a procedure that deviates a little bit from our local law procedure.
Let me ask Joe that because I tried to, I, I, I saw that and I tried to smooth our work down by phrasing everything in this document to hit both targets simultaneously. So I think this hits every criteria we need for CEAs and local laws because that's why I put part of his findings in resolution. So by adopting this, we've adopted this resolution that lays out the criteria. But Joe, is it, do we need to run parallel processes on this? Or can we have one local law that both establishes CEAs as a legal concept and defines wetlands as one type of a CE?
I think you can have one local law, you still, in taking the action, in, in, um, like in our findings, as I think you said, you'd want to make sure that you covered the requirements of both concepts. For example, we have to provide notice to the commissioner, as Rebecca pointed out. It is indeed the DEC, state commissioner, so that, that's really just a filing requirement.
Is, I guess that's a question. Is it, is that something we need to change text in the law, Kurt and Joe? Or can we just kind of make sure that Joe and Katie make sure all the papers get to the right place?
You raised that question when you first proposed it and the answer was, it just gets referred. It does not have to be stated or, or noted here.
Okay, it just gets sent.
That is the answer.
So it doesn't hook us up with the rules?
Now that's changed.
No, it's good. The process has to be followed, followed. As long as the process is followed.
And Jason raised that question a while ago when he first proposed it. Jason, who, whose machine is this on?
Mine.
Put spell check on it. That'll take care of Rebecca's concerns.
I'll send, I'll send everybody a Word document of every local I have so you can.
Thank you.
But do, do, do put spell check.
I will, yeah.
There's one more thing.
It would save a lot of time.
There's one more thing that this accomplishes and it's important. Some number of years ago, the secret regulations were changed so that a CE, an action, an unlisted action within or near or adjacent to a critical environmental area was no longer a type one action, which is reviewed under a higher standard with more scrutiny. You've restored that, which I, I support. I think that's, that's, so, again, I think that was by design.
Yeah, and there's more coming out of pipe. The original, if, and I was curious, uh, I think it kind of got ridiculous because being so dense, when you protect a resource with a buffer, it ends up hitting a ton of properties. So if you start doing things like making CEAs of designated historical properties out of trees over a certain age, out of every water, water course like the village has now, you pretty much get an overlapping set of circles that would effectively make most of the village a type one action by what you do. Which is, may not be a bad thing in a small place because when we have fine planning.
Well, we're doing it right because you're, you're doing it, um, by CEAs and criteria, so it's been.
But CEAs can overlap.
And right, and if that is the end result, then, then.
Not by design, just by effecting.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so is there, did we vote on referring it Katie? Uh, so the motion, I'm seconded.
Ariana made a motion to refer it and I seconded.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And let's take a five-minute break and come back and deal with the peddling. Go ahead.
Okay. I am Hedler, who got their permit like a month before the year expired. And the board had discussed the idea of possibly prorating. And it's the one and only person who's affected in two thousand thirteen, from two thousand twelve, thirteen to two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Are you willing to prorate?
I'll move to prorate if you, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Based on monthly dividing, okay, great.
Alright. Joe, why don't you take this? Where are we at with the peddling soliciting?
Okay, so the, the impetus of this proposed revision was that just when the summer, spring and summer started to get underway, the clerk's office was inundated with applications as they typically are. Um, and there were some really thorny questions that came up as to whether a permit should be issued, does it really meet the standards of the law, et cetera. In dealing with those things, there were three specific deficiencies noted by me in the peddling law that exists now. The first is that our peddling law doesn't really distinguish between soliciting and peddling. And the, what's, what makes that difficult is that the rules of the game as set forth in our code really apply better to soliciting than they do to peddling. So for instance, our code says things like you can't stand in any one place more than ten minutes. Well, that kind of regulation works if you're talking about passing out handbills, which is what soliciting is, you know, knocking door to door. It doesn't really work if you're really talking about peddling, which is really the typical application that we get, which is the hot dog cart. Or, you know, on a Saturday afternoon, you want to sell your fruit somewhere, right? So that was one problem. We needed to really define what we meant by peddling because an argument could have been made that almost no peddling permit that we issued could really fit within the, the confines of the way our law was written. Okay, so that was one thing that needed to be addressed. The second was that, um, there was, it was very unclear how the clerk was to make his or her decisions and what the, although it referenced an appeal process, it didn't really tell you what that appeal process was. So it left the clerk in a tough spot and it left the applicant in a tough spot if they were denied. And then the other thing was it, it didn't really address the difference between when somebody wants to peddle their wares as part of a private event or on private property as opposed to on a public street. So the law that you've got in front of you seeks to address all those things. And what I would like to highlight for you is, number one, again, it defines and separates peddling from soliciting and has two separate sets of criteria for how each would be addressed and what the, what the rules applicable to them are. The other thing it does is that within the context of peddling, it separates out, this is another one of those interesting planning discussions that, where things change over time, the phenomena of, of, um, uh, food carts or food trucks, so to speak. Which is, again, I think a much different thing in terms of regulating it than just the hot dog cart or the ice cream cart. Um, and so I separated those two things out as well. Um, and I put in place a clear set of criteria for when a, when a permit could be denied. So for instance, in this case, it says, uh, it gets referred to the police and that if there are convictions for, um, drug offenses, sexual offenses, um, I'm, I'm trying to find it here, but there's a clear list of the things that would trigger a denial. Yeah, convicted of a felony, convicted of any crime resulting in the applicant's categorization as a sex offender or convicted of any crime involving the possession or sale of a controlled substance. It gives the clerk clear direction, and by the way, if the applicant wants to make their case for why that's inappropriate, they can appeal it to the village board and the village board can hear it. So it's a pretty fair provision, but it does give the clerks a clear guideline. The, the things I think I'd like the board to really think about. I, I think in general, it's pretty straightforward and if you read it, most of it's non-controversial. The biggest issue, and in, we might want to hear from Kurt, it'd be unfair to just ask him on the spot tonight, but you may want to ask for some consideration of this is, I, we know that one of the concerns of the downtown business community, for instance, is the proliferation of vending trucks obviously takes business away from businesses that are paying taxes and, and working hard to sell in their stores. So you may want to consider, um, some kind of linear, you know, some limitation per linear feet or linear mile, certainly within the real downtown district, um, of how many permits can be issued.
I think that's a good idea.
Not to mention that just for the sake of, of good planning and, and, and quality of life, you don't necessarily want eleven carts all up and down Main Street every Saturday afternoon. So I would like the board to think about that and maybe look for some direction on it. And then the other thing is, and Kurt, I, I see you want to speak, this will be relevant to you too. When it comes to the trucks, I think it would be prudent to consider whether there are certain parts of town where you don't want the trucks at all. So the first one that comes to mind for me, for instance, is that real distinct area of Main Street. To my, look, I could be wrong, it's up to you. My feeling is you couldn't really park and shouldn't have a food truck, you know, a four-wheel vehicle that can, is a motor, registered motor vehicle on what we all think of as downtown Main Street. So what I left here is under one fifty-five-six is four blanks, which is representative of nothing. It just means the board may want to consider that from here to here in certain area, Church Street, whatever you want to say, you shouldn't have food trucks. So that's, Kurt, do you have any thoughts on that?
Sure, just some initial thoughts. As Joe mentioned, I could refine them, uh, before you consider adoption, but, um, I recall hearing some of the discussion at, um, at one of the last village board meetings and, and, um, I, I can't really envision how this is going to work. I think we already do a great job, given the street space we have, getting around with relative safety and, um, and, and freedom as pedestrians, drivers and cyclists. So I'm, I'm not really sure where carts are going to go, where vending trucks are going to go. I can't picture. I can't picture, if we're talking one, well, I guess it's, that's hardly much at all. But the moment they start to replicate, I don't know, I don't know what that's going to be like.
Well, I think the idea is that, I don't necessarily think we would be encouraging more applications. I think the idea is that right now, I mean, for instance, look, I can just, I think the packet has your current law. Let me see if I can show you what I'm talking about.
The other thing is this has been on about six or seven agendas, so I'd rather not take a lot of time on this. We have about ten other things to talk about.
If the board has already discussed this to the point where they're confident about where they're going with it, I just, you know, I'm having a hard time picturing.
What do we need to do with this law as of now? Do we have a blank to fill in? What are we doing? Yes, sir?
I think we were going to clarify with Joe any of the questions we had on his proposal.
Right.
And then this.
So we're not sure yet?
No.
Well, I do have questions, and yeah, we are not sure.
We've never talked about what Kurt's raising, at all.
Well, it's been one of the central issues that was raised by the public.
It was raised by the public, but the board hasn't discussed what we think.
So let's, what are we looking at? What are you looking at, Joe? What are you looking at?
He's looking at the old.
I'm looking, I just wanna give you a quick example before you start, just so you understand. I will say this, some deficiencies of your current law really need to be addressed. And if all you did was adopt changes that addressed the appeal process and this notion of the difference between peddling and vending, I think that would be valuable, and here's why. I'll just point you to the current 155.8, and it is in your packet, D, right? Unless the license specifically provides otherwise, a licensee shall not stand or permit the vehicle used by him to stand in one place in any public street for more than ten minutes, or in front of any premises for any time if the owner or lessor of the premises objects. And in no case may they remain in a fixed location in excess of thirty minutes. So I mean, I'm right there, now, I could go into the convoluted way in which we've issued permits, notwithstanding this.
Why don't we go with what we're gonna change?
Right, so that, I just wanna let you know that that's the, that's what really triggered it.
All right, so let's just start at the beginning then. Anyone have a problem with the definitions, one through dash two?
I wanna go back up to findings and purpose. And it says, the business of vending merchandise. I would prefer to change the word vending to selling because I think that could get confused with a store owner having a vending machine, a soda machine.
Joe, I'm gonna ask you to respond first to these, in case.
Yep, no, I have no problem with that, and actually, it's a, since we haven't defined vending yet, we probably shouldn't be using it in the intent section.
So any other concerns about 155.1? All right, 155.2 definitions, any questions? 155.3, license required? I'm just, I'm waiting, yeah, I don't hear anything, I'm just moving on. Do you need to pull it up?
I just, I wanna track what we're saying.
All right, 155.3 license, 154, dash four applicability, any questions? Section 155.5?
I got it.
I feel like I marked it.
So.
All right.
155.5.7, or wait.
A.7?
A.7, yeah. What did I have here? Oh, this is, my question is about when a one-day permit entails. And it does, the law does talk about, it refers to it being, said they be sold at events, but it doesn't actually, from what I saw, and I might have just missed it, like, right now, we have a defined fee of ten dollars for one day, one day at an event and hundred dollars for a year-long permit. And I'm just thinking, what should we do to reform with that in mind? Where, you know, this doesn't necessarily set.
So you're saying my, this section that I've written doesn't make that distinction?
It does, but then when you look at 155.11 license fee.
That's where I have the question that Ariana's raised.
It doesn't, like, it doesn't define.
No, it's a good point, okay.
This addresses it, the idea of, you know, providing a permitted event street festival.
A one-day event permit is different than a whole season. And I had that same question, only I had it under 155.11.
Eleven, right.
Okay.
Well, when you, I mean, the coupling of the two, that's really my only, I think we should say explicitly. Or not require a permit for that day, whatever we wanted to.
I'll give you alternates when I reject it.
And while we're on that, on the license fee, I think we need to differentiate the fee for a one-day event or say, two-day event, and then a season event.
I think if it was a two-day event, twenty dollars.
What gave you?
Maybe it could be done by event, it's rare that we have a two-day event. And say we had a street fair, like it was a street festival, you know.
If the event was one day, it's still an event. If it was three days, it's still an event.
Right.
Right, yeah, so there'd be an event fee and a seasonal.
Versus a season fee, right.
Give you a list of those.
For the board's consideration, I would, instead of saying it's ten dollars per day or a hundred dollars per year, we might want to put in the terminology at a fee to be determined at the beginning of the year. That way, if you decide, we get such an influx this year, you go, you know what, the one-day permit should be twenty bucks, you can make that decision next year as opposed to having to amend an entire policy.
Well, we have said that all fees for anything will be reviewed at the reorganization meeting. We haven't done that this year yet.
But Katie's right, if the law fixes a fee, then we have to change the law. So we could actually do both things that are being suggested here. We should separate, we should identify that there's going to be two different fees and say that it will be.
Fee schedule to go along with this as a component.
That we can.
Adopt each year.
And review any.
I like that.
Yes, that's exactly what, but we still need to do the differentiation between event and season.
So that was 155.
Eleven.
Well, you skipped to eleven, but we started at.
At 155.5.
Right, so now we're on 155.6.
Anything with issues of denial?
Yeah, I had two things. Although when Joe is just explaining the idea of, do we want to designate places that we definitely don't want vending? I have got, remember we should list where vending is allowed rather than where it is not allowed? But as soon as you started talking about it, I thought differently. But that was my initial thought, was that we should just say, you can vend in X area.
I like that idea better.
To vend, have vending in specific areas.
Have the positive statement rather than the exclusive.
Well, under, so, just to be clear though, C, for instance, is talking specifically about vending vehicles. The, like, the food trucks, so to speak.
But I think you need to specify.
Where they can be.
Carts?
I did, yeah.
Okay, as opposed to vending vehicles.
Well, I think it was John Lenny who referenced, like, in Austin, Texas, they have a food truck food court that's right on one of their main strips. And, you know, if we were going to have something more along that line, wherever there's a designated area for food trucks, that would apply here. But I don't know if we wanna do that or not, that was just part of, you know, I was thinking that we should say, they are allowed on X street, X street, and X street.
The place that's the best would be Gladys Hill Avenue, because it's the widest. If you're thinking of allowing them to be all together.
Yeah, it's a good gathering place, yeah.
I mean, it's, that's the widest, and that's where you could do it. You can't have them on Main Street because there's no place.
Oh, yeah, totally agreed. Do we wanna keep talking about that, or should I say my other thing about?
Why don't we, why don't we not start giving the pros and cons of each individual's law?
And maybe that's something board members could consider between now and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, between now and the next time it's on the agenda.
But, but I do wanna make one thought. Do we want vending vehicles?
Yeah, I mean, it's a reasonable question, that's exactly right.
I think that's a great question, yeah, I don't.
I mean, in the village, right? I mean, maybe they belong in the town, you know, maybe, that's definitely a policy decision that could be on the table.
Also, well, the other thing is, is where we've decided what's a, you know, look, if someone can't pull over to sell anything, their business is gonna fail. So the only places that trucks would work were where people would be making money having a food truck. So isn't it just gonna pretty much self-select for where it's gonna be worthwhile?
Well, see, I think there's a big difference between my asking, Debbie, may I park my truck on your property? And then that's between the owner of the property and the vendor. They still would need the license, but we are not preventing vending vehicles. What we're saying is, we don't want them on public streets. So if Kurt owns the parking lot out here, and he gives permission for Joe to bring his hot dog truck, the only thing we have any say in would be the license required to allow Joe to have his truck. He's already got Kurt's permission, and he should have to provide you with that permission. But. But it seems to me that we have to decide, that's a very different issue than saying, yes, vending vehicles may be on any public property.
You know what you could do? You could say that vending vehicles were permitted in connection with an approved event, or only by permission of.
The property owner.
No, the village board, or the playing board for that matter. If you don't want, if you make a policy decision that you don't want them in the village.
Yeah, we can't make the decision between private and public. If they're bad on public property, they're bad on private property.
And there's even more reasons for that. In other words, a lot of these properties have site plans that have been approved for them, and they certainly weren't considering.
Right.
Making room for a sizable truck that's going to have foot traffic. Boy, do I sound like a bureaucrat, okay.
Park cars that are waiting.
Could we ask Kurt, could we ask Kurt to look at various communities and see what they do, and make a recommendation on this section?
Most of the time, it's, there's a provision in law that allows veterans of war on state highways to use the shoulder, and even designate an individual, such as a relative, a younger relative or something, too. That's why the people selling hot dogs on the side are not always war veterans, quite clearly. But that's a special provision, and that's where you see the hot dog trucks and the things that we're used to kinda seeing along state highways, where there's a dirt patch next to the road, is that's a very, very special law that was given as, you know, as a privilege for war veterans. Those are the most common things you can see. And a parking, okay, an empty parking lot, I could see, or in conjunction with an event for a weekend or a day, I can understand, I can see that. It's, but where there's, we're already pretty tight on space in a lot of places. And even one that was suggested to me by someone who did speak to the village board, who's interested in obtaining such a permit if it becomes available, had mentioned a specific property, and it's hard for me to fathom that there isn't any provision to park a big truck and have foot traffic there on this.
Yeah, but what if somebody said, what about a small truck?
Well, okay, well, let's put.
I have a small truck, I have a big truck.
Okay, but most of the, most of our site plans are.
I wanna measure it.
Most of our site plans don't have idle space on them, especially in the village of New Paltz. In some, you know, on North Chestnut, under the old B3 reg, sure, there's, actually, that's, there's plenty of room, but who's going to go there? Who's going to patronize a rolling food vendor on, up on North Chestnut?
The people at the new hotels.
Right, yeah, yeah.
All right, look, again, I don't wanna get too deep, 'cause it's, we've got thirteenth agenda I don't have still left to go, and it's ten o'clock.
Sure.
Are we gonna ask Kurt to write us up something? Is that the next step?
On that section.
And do you want me to handle enforcement too? I mean, is this, is this gonna be my code enforcement officer chasing trucks down the street and standing around measuring the time? I mean, who's, who's gonna do this? The police, the?
We're asking you whether we should have it allowed at all, and if so, where.
Well, enforcement is a part of my job and a part of that equation.
So, yeah, include that too.
All right, I got it, yep.
Yeah, and also, if you are researching communities in the area, also just to check pricing, these schedules.
These schedules, sure.
All right, so when, Kurt, when is it reliable? You've got it on your plate, when can you have it back to us again?
To be safe, the second meeting of next month in August.
I was gonna suggest that, because I know that we're also working on stuff at the first meeting, so I figured.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so let's move on, thank you very much.
So this won't be on our agenda for the first meeting, a month, next, not our next meeting.
And then we're done the season, so we have time to work on it and get it in place by next.
We still have, we've reversed, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try another kind of exercise of consensus here.
When we finish?
We did finish, we just referred it to Kurt to.
No, we refer section.
155.6.
I thought we were referring the entire thing, so if we're waiting, if we're waiting a month anyway?
Can I just put my question in there? On 155.13, I don't think people should be soliciting before 10:00 AM or after 5:00 PM.
155.1.
Number one.
In the summer.
155.13.
So you think it should be what, ten to five?
Does anyone agree with Sally?
No.
All right, does anyone agree with Sally? Hearing nothing.
I don't want people knocking on my door in the evening.
That's when soliciting happens.
They want you to be home.
Yeah.
That's why I don't want them.
We're canvassing for night parties.
That's why I don't want them.
We only started at four.
Yeah. Well, there's, well, okay, let's not, let's not continue this conversation, 'cause Sally didn't get any support for the change, so.
Think about it, maybe come back to it.
All right.
If you want, if Sally wants to persuade people next month, we've got time.
All right, I will go.
Any other, I'm trying to, I think I'm out of order here.
We're done with this one?
13. All right, any other, well, any other, section 13, what are you looking at?
I just wanna just make a request. Can we, instead of having it copied in the packet again, just bring our current copy back to the next meeting?
When we do that, people complain that they don't have it in front of them, and things get tabled, is the problem, so. But can we talk about this not at the board meeting? We can do that another time.
Um.
By freedom for information in public policy meetings, things have to be in hard copy available in each packet.
Let's not continue this conversation.
155.13.3, standard or remainder of any vehicle used in the business standard or remainder for more than ten consecutive minutes on the same street or place, for more than fifteen minutes of any alley, any public street, place, or street. So does that, does that really solve? I mean, it definitely changes the wording of part of the, the problem with the standing.
If I'm right, and it might be standard. This probably should have related only to solicitors.
Well, that's what I was looking for, because I know, and we separated now.
Right, and it needs to be.
And then the next part of it is restriction of vendors.
Yeah, no, that's, I'll fix that. That should be as to solicitors, to keep people from hanging around outside doorways.
Right.
Right, so that's a great catch, and I apologize, that's a mistake.
All right, anything else?
Well, while we're at it, under, well, it's on page 10.8 of this handout on the vending cart.
What section?
This is section 155.2 definitions. It says, any vehicle for a vending cart, any vehicle or other standing or mobile apparatus used for vending as defined herein, which does not have or is not required to have. Really, we mean is not required to have, because. Yeah, the fact that it doesn't have it. The fact that it doesn't have it is. If it should have had one minute of here. Exactly. That's a good point, yeah. I thought about that as similar to the just preceding paragraph, but I think there could be a meaningful difference there. But maybe you could look at that also. I will, that's a good, good language change.
Anything on 155.14, dash 15? I think that's it, but there's no 16. I'm just gonna move a couple of things.
I did have something, sorry. 155.14B1, the sentence is not there. Application must be. Approved by the village board?
I don't have B1, I have 14B1.
Vendor shall not give vendor seats to vendor.
No, B1, there's.
Must be. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. Alright, we'll clean that up.
Ah, yes, good.
That, that was my last thing.
Must be blank.
So I think there's a couple more things that are not really controversial, uh, if they are, or do, um, I'm just gonna move to actually, no, Joe, do we need to refer the stop signs to anybody?
No, it's not a memory zoning code.
That doesn't count as something you're planning. Okay, and I'm just at that public hearing on uh, August fourteen at seven thirty?
Okay, seven thirty five.
On favor.
And may I include the two handicap spaces into?
Not yet, not, let me, this is a separate motion, cuz it's a separate law.
Okay. Okay.
Um, seven thirty five?
Seven thirty five, you're right how.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now I'll move the parking spaces law, same at seven forty, public hearing on the fourteen.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I will move to, the, where did it go? Um, oh, I'll move the modification to board policies, number fourteen.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I bet.
I'm going through, I'm going, I know, we, I'm, I'm, I'm skipping the things that, so we can narrow it down to the theme discussion.
Wait, I'm sorry, please, you have a question as well? Okay, oh, oh.
Just clearing some of the, the simple stuff. So I'm just going down the list in terms of what I think is unanimous. Um.
Wait, I thought total was a handicap parking.
No. Oh, is it the definition? I'm sorry.
Yes, the, the only thing is section two two has question marks there.
Is that in the packet, are you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which, where are we?
The two, the two question mark space question mark. So it's, it's asking if it's one space or if it's two.
Oh, that's me wanting to be sure.
It's two.
It, okay.
It's two spaces. The first two spaces on Patakill, on the east side.
So. Got it.
I mean.
Then prior to your public hearing, I'll just resubmit. I just didn't wanna be wrong.
I realized that that.
Yeah, so it's two space, the second question mark just means it needs to ask, so I'll fix that.
Yep.
You have to vote on the modification.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna move the adoption of fourteen.
Thank you.
On the agenda. I'm skipping the, these streets for now.
Okay.
Um, uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? It's just an end of village board minutes, all of our board and commissions.
That's fine, I thought you were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, let's see, get to this, um, well, well, I'll see if there's any discussion. I'm gonna move the complete streets policy, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I had one.
What do you mean move, move?
To adopt, has a policy.
Move to adopt.
To adopt.
Okay, number four on the back page, Jason. Okay.
The back page is four pages. Oh, oh, that's.
The last page, page four.
Thirteen, thirteen dash four.
Okay, the reduction of speed limit from thirty to twenty-five.
Yeah, it's a pretty tangible one that I put in there and and uh.
I think that needs to be discussed.
By the way, that, although however, um.
I love it. I love it.
You wanna try?
Nope, I'm gonna stay from my bike.
I tell you what, America says, um, it actually does not bind you.
How fast are people actually driving?
Doctor Marty.
In the village, well, many of them.
One, the website we have says twenty-five and less, so.
Many of the, well, many of them are driving, I think, under thirty, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I agree. Um, actually, by the way, this, I don't believe, this doesn't bind you.
This would require a local law that would, uh, look here.
Yeah, that's why I wanna get rid of it.
Yeah.
Oh, this isn't binding on, on anything that requires a local law.
It's not binding, but it's, okay, unless.
This is a policy, I think, yeah.
I would strike it so that we can pass the complete street policy.
You, you don't wanna do that, Sally?
Number four would require that we have to go back and have a, a code change in a hearing before we can adopt this.
Before we can.
No, that, well, this, this policy resolution, it, um, doesn't, doesn't bind, um, um, governing bodies and municipalities in this fashion.
It becomes a guiding principle for future.
How about we just say maximum speed limit? Instead of reducing the speed limit from thirty miles per hour to twenty-five, the speed limit in the village streets will not exceed thirty miles an hour and that takes care of it.
Why don't we ju- why, why don't we just remove it and then we can have this discussion separately from every other issue? We can just pull that out, if there's, if there's discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, I love it.
Yes.
Okay.
There's no reason not to remove it, yeah.
So as amended, I'll move that we adopt the complete street as amended. Is there any further discussion?
Second.
Um, I, I, I did have some, um, typebooks and things that I'll just.
Oh, nothing substantive though?
Um.
No, that changes significant meaning of this.
Not really.
Please, stop.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I just said substance things, but Kurt looked at them and.
What's uh, what do you do with the secret thing? What's the action taking on the secret type one?
So, um, is moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Um.
Jason?
Yeah?
Clarification for Joe. We're having a public hearing on the secret, right?
The secret type one, we set for a public hearing.
That was our.
That was.
We moved to have here.
We referred that to the village and and county planning boards. We didn't set a public hearing.
Yeah.
I thought so, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, you don't wanna set a public hearing.
Now, yeah.
Is that a thirty public hearing?
We're gonna.
I don't know.
Give me one second, I'll type.
We refer, you referred to the planning board and to the county board, but we didn't put a hearing date on it in case we get it back faster.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, I, I thought that was right, that's why I asked, okay.
That's what we. Okay.
Okay, um, next, actually, I don't even know what this is. I just said bonding and I forgot what that note means.
Where are we?
We're off the agenda.
Those three rules, they moved from the consent agenda.
Those three items.
Oh, 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 uh, Sally, you asked us to be removed, the approval of the.
Yes.
Um, sort of, sort of.
Yes, can we do that?
Yeah, that, that's now, so what's, what's the concern?
Okay. Okay, um, one, what we're really wanting to do is authorize to prepare for a bond issue, the listed projects, subject to the board approval bids. You don't, we, the board hasn't approved the bids on any of these things. What we wanna do is begin the preparation to bond, so that if and when.
We, well, the, the motion, the, the, it says to proceed with bidding, so put these out to bid.
We already authorized bidding on Peace Park, that's done.
But it's not only Peace Park.
Nope, just meant, we authorized Peace Park, that's done. We have not authorized bidding for the generator.
Right, that's what this would do.
No, this, what you want to do, Jason, 'cause I've talked with Nancy about this, is we want to authorize her to begin to prepare the bid, the, the documents to bond.
Yes.
Irrespective of whether we've accepted the bids or not.
This has nothing to do with accepting anything. There's nothing, anybody's selecting a bid.
That is not what this says.
We haven't gotten any bids back. There's nothing for us to accept.
Proceed with bidding and obtaining the bonding necessary.
Right.
For, yes, the bonding necessary, but you pa- you have to prepare the bond, Ariana, before.
Proceed with bidding.
You have to get it ready, then, well, as you accept the bids, you fit them into the bond issue and one of my questions that now today has raised is don't we want to include Hasbrook Drainage in this? Don't we?
Hasbrook Drainage has already paid for our shares coming out of the parks reserve. Remember, we allocated that two years ago.
But what about the water tank?
The water tank is, that's part of this motion would be to, to go forward with every, to put everything out to bid that has not already been put out to bid and, and to prepare the bid documents.
Okay.
So it does two things. It does both. Everything you're saying we need to do?
It could have an.
We're doing right now. That's what we're.
The fuel tank replacement at the wastewater treatment facility has already been budgeted and paid for. It's not a part of a bond issue. It's in the budget.
Where is it?
And Tom's proposal, which we're gonna deal with, I would think our generator should be rebid for a gas.
It's not, they're, they're not counter, they're not, they're not, uh, we don't need to redo anything to the generator. It would just use.
We want to bid for the generator, Jason. This is just a, a ballpark figure, a hundred and forty thousand.
No, I know Sally, that's what I'm trying to get us to, to, get us to approve us to go out to bid.
Right, but I wanna go out for bid on a gas generator now.
And to get us to.
Yeah, Jason.
I have it. But you don't know, you don't know if we need to go out to bid on the gas generator.
Right.
No, no, we do need to go out to bid on.
We need to go out to bid on a gas generator.
Yes, no, not a gas, no, you don't, Sally, you don't know how a generator is gonna be fueled.
We've all.
So, this is what our, our head of public works has said we need, so I'm gonna rely on him and our engineer to tell us what our requirements are.
But that is. His generator is based on oil, Jason.
Says it's a virgin's generator.
If we are going to do his proposal on gas
Yeah.
for village hall and DPW, I would think we might wanna.
But we don't know if we need an oil generator or a gas.
We don't know, uh, may I?
Please.
We, we discussed this today and, uh, we did not know in fact, uh, whether or not we could go out and find a, a gas generator that would function with the same level of efficiency as the oil generator, but we hope that we could.
So, we should bid both ways.
So we could bid it both ways.
Mm-hmm.
And then if, if we could, um, find a generator that would, uh, be fueled by natural gas rather than fuel or diesel fuel,
Mm-hmm.
then that would make the proposal to go for natural gas for all the facilities, all that much more attractive.
Exactly.
Alright, so.
So if we could wrap these together.
That's, I mean, that's the whole, that was the point of the motion.
Yeah.
So the motion on the floor right now, I believe, is there a motion? If not, I'll make it.
No.
I'll make, I'll, I will, then we can change this in discussion. I move that we go out to bid for the projects listed and we authorize the treasurer to begin the bonding, um, for those projects. That's the motion.
And my friendly amendment is that you are already authorized out for bid, the first project.
Yes, we understand that. It doesn't change the motion. It doesn't change the meaning or anything about the, about the motion.
If you're saying you're going out for bid, we've all, are all, already out for bid.
Sally, yes, it says that clearly on the piece of paper, so it's not gonna be bid, we're not gonna bid it twice.
I hope not.
Of course, we're not gonna bid it twice.
Well.
Fine, did I amend my motion for everything not previously billed or bonded for?
Fine.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Um, uh, Tom, the natural gas thing, you wanna talk about that?
Well, there's a, a very brief memorandum, uh, in, I believe in front of each of you which, uh, indicates that, uh, natural gas conversion can take place for all of the facilities in this complex at a cost of blah, 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 blah.
Ninety-nine dollars and something.
Not, not even, no, is it, uh?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven thousand dollars. With a, uh, an amortization at twenty-one thousand seven dollars and eighty-one cents per year giving a buyback period of four point six five years. Uh, Lou thinks that this, and, well, I shouldn't just say Lou. Lou and Nancy each think this is a no-brainer, that since it's available and, uh, it, it's immediately available, we could go, uh, we could go this route assuring that we will therefore save the village a very substantial amount of money every year thereafter, um.
And I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Does this promote fracking?
Hmm?
It does not promote fracking, uh, in any.
Sorry, like, this is the only thing I can think about is fracking.
It does not promote.
Why would you wanna bring fracking up at ten twenty?
It does not promote fracking in any respect more than the use of petroleum products promote fracking.
No.
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 Every bit of petroleum you get now, almost surely, comes from a company that does fracking, if the petroleum itself does not come from fracking. Or, uh, oil sands conversion.
Right.
Which is a more intense process, so I would, I have thought about that.
I, yeah, I know that.
And I would say the answer is no, it does not promote fracking unless by, uh, promote fracking, I mean, there's any use of petroleum products or gas promote fracking. If, if all of those uses promote fracking, then it's.
Maybe we're already promoting fracking.
We're all, we are promoting fracking.
And all natural gas is not.
If you fly to Alaska, for example, you promote fracking if you.
It's all my fault.
Change on you, Rebecca.
It doesn't matter. If you use airplanes, that's enough, I've said.
But not, but what I wanna say is natural gas has been around for a long time and is not the result of fracking. There are natural gas fields which are available that aren't fracking.
Alright, the motion's on the table, seconded. Any other concerns?
I have a lot of concerns. I feel comfortable voting for this until I do these things.
You can always vote no. Um.
Well, then I don't wanna vote no if I would vote yes, if I, you know, had.
But I think we really need to get going on a generator, Ariana. We, we know we have had problems in the last two emergencies. We do not have a generator.
I, I, that's, I'm not against that. What are your thoughts, Jason?
Um, I don't, I don't, I think it's a no-brainer. I think we need fuel. This case is cheaper fuel. It's really not making, you know.
And clean. By the way, if you look at your packet, you'll see the reduction in the carbon, uh, use.
Fourteen some tons.
We're, we're talk, we're talking about a very substantial improvement in clean air in our building.
I, I think.
Look, we, we have a lot, yeah, our options are fracking, nuclear, coal and oil burning power plants. That's it.
Or natural, or natural gas.
Well, about one, one to two percent of all energy is clean energy. Every light of power.
Well, what does ninety-seven thousand dollars get us in terms of clean energy? Truly clean energy.
It does not a thing. That's not the point. We're not there yet. We don't have the technology or the money yet, but I'm, I'm working on it. But for right now, we need to heat things and light, turn the lights on and our off, nuclear and oil and coal fire plants from the normal period. But we had the status quo, where we, all this juice is coming from. Or natural gas, we burn, you know.
That's only there.
We're using any, you know, we're screwing the planet no matter what we do. So we might as well do it cleaner and cheaper.
It's, it, I, I think it's cleaner on, on the line and cheaper.
Er, on the line, yeah, not clean and cheap, cheaper and cleaner.
Yeah, okay.
Until fracking came along, it was by far the best probably of all the, the fossil fuel type.
Alright, so if you, if you want more time, we can always vote now, we'll bring it back.
I wanna, I want, I'd like to have the question.
That's what I'm doing right now. Well, uh, is moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's three ayes, motion carries.
Well, you should note what their votes were. Are there two noes or one?
I asked for nays, I didn't get anything at all.
I've done it, S and A.
Oh, did you? And no votes on our part.
I, yeah, I, I, my only issue is, um, I just feel like I didn't have enough time to see any of this, which.
Um. Okay, well, in future, we can maybe have that conversation when we decide to add things to the agenda or not. Cuz we could just remove anything that we don't know I'm prepared for.
Right.
I, I mean, I'm prepared only because I've had a long conversation with Lou about this, so.
And I, I know.
And, Jason, we talked about this, we're all.
The motion carries.
Motion carries.
Alright, uh, next on is, uh, the moratorium. Does this need referrals or is this, can just, the public just be said?
It does.
Everything.
Okay, so I don't even wanna have the conversation. We have to do this. I'm, I'm gonna make the motion to some, uh, to refer uh, an extension of the moratorium to the village and county planning boards. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, and we'll see where we get in, in a month.
Me, only because I opposed it the first one.
Right. Um, number eighteen, I'm sorry, I'm using my own numbering, uh, but is the twenty thirteen CFA resolution from Mark Blauer. This is a resolution that passed for our awards, we're gonna, we're, we're applying for.
I don't, why, that was on the table?
Yeah, here, this is my copy of it.
Oh, thank you.
It's a commitment that if the project overruns the amount that we're, that they're hoping, that we hope that we'll get, that we'll pay it.
Oh, I saw this.
Um, we did the same thing last year.
I saw this.
Yeah, it's a rubber stamp kinda, this thing.
Alright, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Um, I'd like to, um, ask that, uh, someone from Wuthen Pond come for a meeting on the, the first meeting in August?
I would like to do that.
Is that?
Yeah, it would just be, it would be a meeting of, a, a subcommittee, I just.
Would, would meet your, your. Oh, it doesn't have to be the full board.
Doesn't have to be the full board.
Okay, so that doesn't need board action, but.
Well, I just want your permission to have the, to call the meeting and I'd like one other board member.
Okay.
And Ariana was the only other board member present for the initial problem.
Okay, so, so moved Sally and Ariana to meet with Wuthen Pond?
Okay, and Nancy.
And, is there a second?
A second?
It's not in the packet. It's not in Sally and the agenda.
Yeah. Because.
It's not in the packet, it's in Sally and the agenda because of problems with Wuthen Pond.
Oh, I know.
Because Nancy informed us, all bills were paid and we made a promise.
Right.
That we would meet with that, we're sorry.
Alright.
We would meet with.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, and then Kurt's code enforcement.
Um.
That's the last thing I have, yeah?
Do we have the, the?
Well, we didn't go through the entire agenda. We still have fifteen minutes.
We approved those.
We did that. We did that, we did that.
We did. Why did we skip those?
With the gas. Could we, could, just, would the board say that it's happy? Could we, could, just, would the board say that it's happy with the proposal that Kirk gave us, with the CIT, that we're going to help with enforcement issues, going out and looking at problems, and you got the letter and you got the phone.
And it uses the existing process and, and forms for anyone who would like to register inquiry about whether or not it applies with the code.
I mean, to me, this sounds awesome.
So this is not, it's not creating a new procedure, it, it's not, um, it uses the existing process, um, that the state recommends and that every municipality must have records about, um, what we're doing is it's organized, it's an organized effort.
And if you wanna join us.
Where, where is, where are the forms?
Uh, most are, oh, yeah.
No, is it, aren't they going to replace them?
They're gonna be in, in Village Hall, but, but the CIT.
They're already there.
Village Hall delivery, uh, a basket for them, as well as in my office, so in building office and Village Works office, um.
Okay. And online, okay.
And online, thank you.
And we may invite you to the walk-around, which we're gonna do, if you'd like to help.
So, that's moved, and secondarily?
I think.
I'll move it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I move we adopt the complete streets policy with the one amendment about, uh, speed limits.
We already did that.
You already did that.
What, say fifteen and sixteen, is it?
Because it's the next week, we're.
Fifteen and sixteen.
Oh, 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 I was gonna, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, you're right, um, fifteen, sorry, I have my numbering on, fifteen, uh, do we, does, do we ever review that? What is our next step?
You know, I, I was going to exact, say exactly that, um, only because I got a email from Melinda Buff today about some, what she, she said she apologized for not sending it sooner, but she saw an inconsistency with something at CDV, I guess, forwarded the email, or she said you just have to.
Yeah, because, it, when I looked at it, when it came in, I started to do a little poking around those kinds of things too, and I would, I would have asked for the opportunity, so I'm glad I didn't wanna hold it up.
So is this a first meeting in August or second meeting in August?
I mean, if, if you don't minds, I mean, again, I'm gonna be here at the second meeting in August, it might be, I just put it on then if that's.
I, I'm, I mean, sure, you know.
I mean, if it's not, I'll give you, I'll give you a written recommendation, you can put it on the first one if you want.
I mean, I don't know if it's anything that really is.
Put it on the first one and I'll, you sent forward to that email, I'll give you something in writing.
Yeah. Yeah, it was really just one, and one event, um, also, uh, 'cause I, I send all of this as an update to the committee, um, to convene the next meeting, and MNT Bank is not able to do the obtaining credit, so we're only using Empire State, there's a form for each of them, so we're just gonna strike that one.
Strike the Empire?
Yeah, and strike MNT, Empire is gonna be the only bank that we're using to obtain credit.
Oh, okay. So I'm gonna move the approval of the, do you want, are we ready to approve?
No, forms. No.
Oh, no, what I'd like to do though is, in the reorg meeting, we never appointed the person from the board, and I'd like to move that Ariana Bosco be the board's representative to the revolving loan fund committee and chair of the committee.
Second.
You wanna take, do you wanna do us all in favor, Rebecca?
Pardon me? Oh, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 What else do we have to do?
Um, the minimum residential.
And I actually have an expedient and what I believe is an appropriate suggestion, um.
Table it?
No, actually, what I, what I ask, um, is, uh, Jay, now, about the, uh.
Parking?
Yeah, and, and actually, I have an expedient and appropriate, um, suggestion that the state will consider, and that is that, if you, um, please give the planning board and myself a chance with it as is, you've already held a public hearing, you've already made the referrals, the county made good constructive comments, give us a chance, and if it is not working out, I will return and, and revise it in, in whatever way is necessary.
Can I, I want, I have one comment that may, may be useful, you can bring it back to the planning board. My, the planning board suggested that you have an actual waiver process or procedure, somebody at the county planning board, that you have to ask for it, and you go through that approval process, and I saw various commentary back from board members, et cetera, on whether they thought that was a good or bad idea, all of which I understand. And I always think that if you can avoid a separate proceeding and get it done by the adoption of a law, it's probably a good point. I have something that falls in between that the board may wanna consider. My concern when I read it, didn't have anything to do with the waiver concept, it had to do with the idea that the only real fundamental change to the, to the code is the change of the word requirement to guideline, and I worry that some applicant or neighbor, you know, that wants to oppose an application will simply say that there's not a significant enough legal difference between the two words, that, in other words, if, if it's on the books as you have to have this many parking spaces for this many, you, you know, whatever. I was gonna suggest, let me cut to the chase, one line that, that simply says, and you can find this, Kurt, I know you can find it in twenty different codes all over the place, that gives the planning the right upon good cause shown to, to vary the, the parking.
No, objection, I, I.
It's, and I think it might solid, write like, you know, one line, so, somewhere between what the county planning board said and what.
It doesn't.
Cause it, it clarifies the existing thing.
Okay, and, and so in other words, it doesn't add time, um, time or just.
Right, just a thought, and feel free to talk to me about it, or have George talk, whatever, or do what you want.
Well, of course. Actually. I can, having heard that, as, as our representative observed, recommendation from our village attorney, I, I fully support that, especially if it doesn't prolong the ability for the planning board to experiment.
So what do we do?
When's the board's next meeting?
I'm not sure.
He's asking us to table it until he has a chance to go over it.
Can I, can I ask before we vote to table it, uh, are you suggesting that we therefore dropped, drop the substitution altogether? That we not use the word guidelines, that we leave the word requirements, but that we give the, uh, planning board the authority?
I don't, I understand the question, I don't think I would change it now, because then you kind of are, you really are, it's a new law, I'm okay with the word guideline, 'cause I think it does, as Jason just say, said, convey the intent, and the intent was to make them less strict. All I'm saying is that I would also add a single sentence that makes clear that the planning board has the authority to vary it.
No objection, I know that the, well, I know that our village's planning board is, wants a.
Cause that's what they want, right?
Yeah, but they don't wanna see it, and I mean, is that what we're talking about?
Maybe they don't need to, it, it's, um, there's been a recommendation made by the county planning board, this would be both responsive to that comment and, in my view, not such a substantial change as to require the derailing of this current process.
No objection to amending it to add, to add that provision if, if, if we can, if we can do that.
So what are we doing right now?
So we.
We would leave the word guidelines in, but add a clause.
Right, so.
And the clause would be exactly.
That the planning board has the right, has the authority on, with good cause shown to vary these.
You can send that language to, to.